Good evening, everybody. Wanted to welcome everyone to City Hall. I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is the Hayward City Council meeting, August 19th, 2025. Wanted to apologize for starting a few moments late. We had a closed session. We had a topic that took us over a little bit. But before we get started, I'd like to ask Councilmember Cyrop if he could please do the pledge allegiance.
Please stand if you're able.
Thank you. And if Madam City Clerk, if you can take a roll.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening. Councilmember Andrews.
Present.
Councilmember Vonia Junior.
Present.
Councilmember Goldstein.
Present.
Councilmember Roach.
Present.
Councilmember Cyrop.
Present.
Councilmember Sermanio. Mayor Salinas.
Present. Thank you. Next is, I'd like to call upon our city attorney and if he can give a closed session announcement, if any.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. There was a closed session at 5:30, at which time the council received a report from the Council Appointed Officers Committee regarding the position of city manager. There's no reportable action. The council also had a closed session on anticipated litigation. One case, council took no reportable action. There was one item agendized for discussion. The Fellman case, council did not have an opportunity to discuss it. It was continued to the closed session on Thursday night. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. We do have a special presentation today. It is for Adopt a Block Day. And I don't want to call out all my colleagues, but of all my colleagues, who has adopted a block?
We've adopted the whole city.
Yes, they have. Do see them out on Keep Heyward Cleaning Green Task Force every time they have an event. So yes, absolutely. So with that said, today, from the city of Hayward, we have, is Armando Quintero? Yeah, we have Armando here. Our Director of Maintenance Services, Todd Roman, is here. And of course, our Deputy Director of Maintenance Services is Rod Alfonso. And I say this, I say this to about, I say this to all of the department heads, but let me tell you, ladies and gentlemen, let's give Mr. Roman a big round of applause for the work that they do in keeping this city clean. You guys really are one of the hardest working departments, so thank you very much for that. We also have a, see, Adopt a Block group. We have multiple members from the Adopt a Block group. Are they, are they here? I'm assuming they are. And then, of course, we have multiple members from the Cleaning Green Commission. I know Tom Ferreira is here and the other, and you have Sergey. Sergey, Sergey, what's his last name? Sergey, Sergey, I always forget your last name, but Sergey, thank you very much. Both of you have been incredible leaders and really champions of keeping the city clean, so I really appreciate your work on that. Okay, so I do have a proclamation. And what I'll do is I'll read the proclamation and then we have one I'm going to give to Director Roman and his group, and I'll have you hold that one. And then we have one for the Keep Heyward or the Cleaning Green Commission. I'll have you hold that one. And then the Adopt a Block members, and I'll have Mayor Pro Tem Roach hold that, hold that one. And so, okay, here we go. So Adopt a Block Day. Whereas residents and businesses desire an environment that is clean and attractive, and whereas a litter and trash-free city attracts residents, businesses, and visitors contributing to a prosperous and vibrant community, and whereas the city of Hayward offers services and programs to mitigate trash and debris in our streets and on our sidewalks, such as the comprehensive residential waste and recycling material collection program that provides weekly curbside service to all households, year-round street sweeping with twice monthly coverage of all public streets and enforcement against the accumulation of trash and litter on private properties. And whereas the city's Cleaning Green Commission, formerly known as the Keep Heyward Cleaning Green Task Force, launched the Adopt a Block program in 2012. And whereas the Adopt a Block program is an initiative that relies on volunteers to make an ongoing commitment to monitor and maintain streets and neighborhoods in Hayward. And whereas volunteers sign up to keep specific areas of the city at least four times a year, four times a year and more often as needed. And whereas since the program's inception, over 300 groups have signed up adopting over 350 blocks in the city. Incredible. Whereas between July 1st, 2024, and July 30th, on June 30th, 2025, Adopt a Block groups submitted 546 Access Hayward requests, reporting 650 cubic yards of trash and debris collected by volunteers during the Adopt a Block cleanups. Whereas the efforts of volunteers participating in programs like Adopt a Block program make Hayward a great place to work, live, and do business, and go to school. And therefore, I, Mark Salinas, Mayor of the city of Hayward, and on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim August 23rd, 2025, as Adopt a Block Day. Ladies and gentlemen, let's give our Development and Maintenance Services a big round of applause. And, you know, I don't want to put, I don't want to put our Director of Maintenance on the spot here, but 650 cubic yards. When you come up here, if you can give us a visual of how big is 650 cubic yards is and how much trash that equals, just to put that into context, I think it is pretty incredible. But anyways, come on up, let's take some pictures. And, oh, and then, of course, our Keep Heyward Cleaning Green designee, our liaison, Councilmember Andrews.
The Cleaning Green Commission liaison.
Yeah, okay, all right, all right.
I just wanted to thank all of the commissioners who help out with making sure our blocks are being adopted and we're having a cleanup August 23rd. And I'll let you all announce that. But I also want to give a special thank you to Colleen Kamai, who helps administratively support all of the efforts for the Cleaning Green Commission, as well as our maintenance staff. So I just wanted to thank her for her special efforts in helping. I think she helped create Adopt a Block Day as well, so I just want to give her kudos for that. Thanks.
Okay, we do have some public comment cards next. Well, I'll tell you what, let's take the pictures, we'll do public comment cards, and then we'll resume. Okay, so I need, if Mr. Roman and his colleagues can come on up, and then, of course, Tom Ferreira and his colleague from the Cleaning Green Task Commission, and then I think that's it.
So 600 cubic yards, if you think of a typical pickup truck, that's about four yards. So you think about 25 trucks times six, so 300 or 400 pickup trucks full of debris. So it's an awful, awful lot. So I want to introduce Streets Manager, Armando Quintero. He's going to accept the award and just say a couple things.
Thank you, Mayor, Councilmembers, for the proclamation tonight, recognizing Adopt a Block as Saturday, August 23rd, 2025. Along with the work done by the city's Cleaning Green Commission, these community members play a vital role by picking up the litter and keeping Hayward Clean and Green. As we recognize Adopt a Block through the proclamation, many of these volunteers who formed the city Adopt a Block program have joined tonight, if we can give them a round of applause. On behalf of Maintenance Services, I would like to thank council, the Cleaning Green Commission, and the Adopt a Block volunteers for their hard work. Thank you.
How about, can we have Tom Ferreira come up?
Red is go, right? Okay. Well, thank you, Mayor, City Council. Welcome back in the chambers. Thank you for all your work. I appreciate you making this proclamation for Adopt a Block Day. We've gained so many Adopt a Blocks in the last few years, it's amazing, and you doing this proclamation will only make it even bigger. So I appreciate that. And I appreciate, again, Maintenance Services and all the Adopt a Block volunteers in the audience. Appreciate it. And some of these, as you know, some of the meetings are long, under five slides short over the past five years I listened to, and some are short, some are long, but they're all important. So that's very important. And I want to acknowledge our liaison, Angela Andrews. For a few months ago, you spoke about a friendly amendment about Adopt a Block for the recent Starbucks coming to Hayward. I thought that was very important, not only residential Adopt a Blocks are important, but I think businesses are important too, because it plays a vital role. Give it a hand. Plays a vital role of bringing in different businesses to that surrounding business, bringing in more income for that business, and more revenue for the city as well. So it's very important. I would like to see that, if staff could work on that, maybe have a flyer explaining what that is. They could have their own sign and have it on their street, be very proud of it, and other residents see that, and they want to shop there or go to that business, and it just causes a domino effect, but for all of us in Hayward. So just wanted to put that in your ear. So again, thank you so much. I appreciate the proclamation and everything else. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you. Thank you. Our next speaker on this item is the Chair of the Cleaning Green Commission, Melissa Milliman.
Hi there.
Oh, there, oh, okay, I'm looking.
Hi there.
Hi.
Thank you for hearing me tonight. I appreciate that. I am kind of bummed that I'm not there in person, but I'm grateful for Zoom option. So again, thank you, Mayor Salinas and councilmembers, for, you know, making a proclamation tonight that recognizes our Adopt a Blockers, the program. It's very important. As well, I'd like to also thank our maintenance staff, Colleen Kamai and Todd Roman and all the team at the Soto Road Maintenance Yard. They're just amazing for helping the Cleaning Green Commission out and do their job. And also, I'd like to recognize Access Hayward Crew, which is part of the maintenance team at the Soto Road Yard. I mean, Access Crew is just bad, oh wait, nope, got to, can't say that. They're just good access, hands down. And then I actually want to say thanks to our current CGC members, Cleaning Green Commission members, and our previous, what is, what was called the Cleaning Green Task Course members, who have also supported the city in coming up with ideas about how Adopt a Block program could be supported, promoted, and ideas of recognizing our, our community members that participate in this program. I know who they are, I think they know who they are, so anyway, thank you to all of those members, previous and current. But the biggest, biggest thanks that I have, and huge rounds of applause, are to the people that are there tonight in the chamber rooms that are already part of the program and going out and, you know, on their own accord, cleaning up their city and their environment, and taking the extra time to care about their surroundings, and sometimes never getting any thanks from their community members, and sometimes even getting hassled about it. So that is why this proclamation is very important. So because we all have to band together, paid or unpaid, volunteer, doesn't matter. We're trying to make our city a cleaner and greener and more beautiful city. So it takes, takes all of us to do that on some level, so I'm very grateful. Oh, and to backtrack, I just want to say that Mr. Roman and Ms. Kamai, they were the ones that worked very hard on the T-shirts. They're beautiful. If they ever retire, they might have to have a T-shirt designing business. But finally, I would just like to say, you know, if anyone in, in the city chambers tonight is not a part of the Adopt a Block program, or you know somebody that wants to be, please visit the Cleaning Green Commission website to get information about it, and please come visit us this Thursday night at the Downtown Street Party. We will have our booth in front of the awesome B, Books on B booth, or Books on B, and then we'll have our booth in front of that. And then we also do have our upcoming cleanup on Saturday, the 23rd. Anybody that's interested, or anybody that is interested, if you're already cleaning up your block, you ought to get credit for it. It's a win-win situation. So please come visit us. Now, thanks to everyone in city chambers and at home who have already been making a difference in your city, because this coming Saturday is Make a Difference Day. So you've already been making a difference. Let's help others make a difference in our community. I mean, that is, that is the most important thing. So thank you so much.
Thank you. I really appreciate it. And again, the, you know, the Cleaning Green Commission, the Cleaning Green Commission, its former life was the Keep Heyward Cleaning Green Task Force. And this group started as, initially started as a small little group, but it has grown into a full, you know, commission here in the city. But over the years, it has been the Keep Heyward, Keep Heyward Cleaning Green Task Force, now Cleaning Green Commission. It has been this group that has literally volunteered Saturday mornings, 8 o'clock in the morning, to come out and pick up trash and, and really make this city arguably one of the cleanest cities in Alameda County. We can drive up and down some of our main corridors, and we can see things like no longer plastic bags drifting and floating throughout the streets, cigarette butts, and, and other just nuisance trash all over the place. And it is because of the work of the Keep Heyward Cleaning Green Task Force and the policies that they have set forth that we have been working under for the last 15, almost 20 years. And so the Keep Heyward Cleaning Green Task Force and the volunteers associated are just doing some outstanding work. With that said, move on to Ms. Davida Scott.
Is it on? I just wanted to say thank you, council, but most of all, I wanted to thank Maintenance Services, because I was counting right now, we started nine years ago here with the city of Hayward, and we built Raising Leaders, and Maintenance Services gave us our first $20,000. They were the first department within the city of Hayward to partner with me, and that's how I was able to meet everybody within the city of Hayward. And from $20,000 to now, we've raised 11.3 million in the last five years. And we've, let's give that a round of applause. But in Maintenance Services, we have placed over 65 interns. They've hired two of our students permanent. We had one student temp, our student that was just hired this year at 19 years old, came from Brankwith Continuation High School, and he's a full-time employee. So I think a lot of people don't recognize the work that goes in every single day through Maintenance Services. I probably annoy them all the time, but I'm so thankful. We, we've picked up so much trash, we need to pick up more, I acknowledge that. But really, I'm thankful for every single department. Just this summer, we placed eight interns, and every single man in that yard has bought our young men lunch, breakfast, they mentor them, it's just so much. So I'm so thankful for the partnership, and we have a great city, because this is a model city while other people follow, so thank you, you guys.
Thank you. Thank you. And yeah, absolutely. I can't say enough about the Keep Heyward Cleaning Green Task Force and the, and the Commission. And I wanted to thank Councilmember Andrews for her leadership on there and really keeping, keeping this policy space, actually, you know, this policy priority front and center of the city. So thank you very much. And with that said, we can go to our next item on the agenda, which is public comments. And I do have a bunch of cards on public comments, and I was just noticing, I have one, two, three, four, I have five cards from Ms. Peggy Guernsey. I'll tell you what, I will let you go first, but can you, can you plea, I'll, can you, can I ask you this? You know, I'll take the prerogative of the chair. I will give you a little bit more time than three minutes, but if you can just be brief and succinct, and, and I'd appreciate that, but yes.
Am I, there we go. Thank you, councilmember. Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that. I do have, and I've never, okay. One of my first concerns are something I asked for years ago about red light cameras here in Hayward. I know I had them before, but since COVID, we have had nothing but a horrible, horrible increase of speeding, red light cam, red light lights and stop sign runners. Today, I saw four, two stop sign and two red lights. And when I was traveling with Mr. McKay, he also saw four in a different area of Hayward. We can't have our officers chasing these guys because, whatever. Mr. Goldstein said two years ago that you were reviewing this for 10 years, and it was two years ago, and what have you done about red light cameras now? Bob's heard nothing, and neither have I. I'm disappointed. I think they're the safest way to go, because the officer doesn't have to chase anybody, you don't have car, you know, crashing into other things and that, so I support him. I know, whatever. Bike lanes only. Since we've been painting them green in Hayward, I don't see people riding bikes in them. During two different episodes, I saw four kids at the, at B Street and Mission Boulevard riding their bikes in the center of the intersection, and nobody could do anything. The cars were all stopped, but they were, they were younger kids, and school hadn't been back in session yet. But I see this all the time. During the last party, there were bike riders on foothill, riding up in and out of the traffic, nowhere in the bike lanes or anything else. I think bike lanes are great, I think they're safe, but if we're not using them, we're wasting green paint, we're wasting streets, we're not getting our traffic under control. So I don't know what the solution is, that's my opinion. I also have seen an extreme increase in expired red tag registrations on cars. Police don't go around and tag them anymore, but if we had red light cameras, we'd pick them all up. These cars are involved in thefts, they're involved in accidents, all kinds of things. You know, it's against the law. I know it's a state law, you register your car, you have insurance, somebody hit you, they don't have tags, they don't have insurance. It's very easy, get them on the camera. In regards to the airport, I'm getting very disgusted with, I don't see the airport cleaning up its act. I think the air, the hotel they put down there is the ugliest thing I've ever seen in Hayward. Luckily, Hayward on Mission Boulevard has a Holiday Inn suite that's beautifully, has rocks ensconced in it and everything else. It's a beautiful building. Here, you've got this yellow, orange candy cane thing sitting in the middle of Hesperian Boulevard, but the Air Force buildings are falling apart, there's no work out there. I believe it was in 2006 when we opened the theater in Hayward, and later when we did the Red Tails Celebration with the Tuskegee Airmen, there was talk about having a Black Aviation Museum there. None of that's ever been gone any further. We had three Tuskegee Airmen living here in Hayward. We have a heritage in Hayward that we're not just a bunch of farmers, we're a bunch of wonderful, creative, brave people. And, you know, I know we're talking about Russell City and giving people money back for that, but we didn't honor any of those Tuskegee Airmen, except that one night. And the one gentleman, Mickey Spears, used to come to every, the, the red, say no to drugs. Every single meeting, he came to tell the kids about the Tuskegee Airmen, and we've never honored them. So I don't think we ought to be dumping any money into the airport, except, you know, whatever, but we got enough Lear gens over there, we must be making some money somewhere. The last thing I have is in regards to Sky West Golf Course. This is the last, most beautiful, pristine, open piece of property that we have available. We have endangered animals and species already identified out there, so we can't go digging it all up and everything. There's laws against it. There's too many, there's a plan to put in commercial buildings. We have a Hayward full of empty commercial buildings in our industrial park, all over Hayward. You build Lincoln Landing, there's commercial buildings underneath, they're all empty. You go down Mission Boulevard, there's empty buildings. Diane Fagaldi will tell you and complain about all the empty on Tennyson. We need, I know, Mr. Mayor, you try and try, and I appreciate all the work you're trying to get the street vendors off the street. They're out in the street now, more and more blocking sidewalks.
Ms. Guernsey, I gave you five minutes, and that's a minute on each card, so thank you very much.
All right. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Okay. Our next item, or our next speaker is, let's see, some of these. Okay. Our next speaker is Navi Bajwa? Yeah?
How you guys doing today? Thank you for your time. I own a business in Hayward that my parents started about 35 years ago. He owns the restaurant across the street, and since 2020, we have had vendors in our parking lot, on the sidewalks, that take up our parking space. We have to clean up the trash after them. When we say something to them, they pull out their cell phones, say we're racist, they start threatening us, they call their mob bosses to our shopping centers where we pay rent, and we can't touch them. I have letters that I've brought with me today that I've talked to the Sergeant of Police, the police, the Hayward Mayor, every councilmember, the city clerk. I've taken pictures at 6:00 in the morning. The problem with me taking pictures and bringing more evidence to you guys is it puts me at danger. Every time I take a picture, they get angrier and angrier at me. It puts me and my family at risk. So my wife doesn't work at the store anymore, ever since this started. They've been here since 2019, on the same corner. For the people that eat street food, one thing you have to realize is they're making street street funds. They're not getting paid the wages I pay my employees, they're not. If anybody wants to stop by my business tomorrow in the morning, I open at nine on the corner of Winton and Jackson, 396 Winton, they will be there. Their mob bosses will drop them off at six in the morning in the cold and work them throughout the heat. That's wrong. It's wrong on so many ways and the fact that we allow this, it keeps them on the streets and it will keep them on the streets. This one lady owns a lot of stands in Hayward. And if you speak to Officer Carpenter, which is the Sergeant of Hayward, he knows that. When he confronted them, they have spreadsheets and labels of the streets, they have itemized receipts of the snacks, the chips, the soda, the drinks they sell. This is an organized business, it's not just a street vendor. After five years of dealing with them and having eight more show up and me going back and forth with so many people, I'm done. I'm not going to email you guys anymore about this. I've tried, I've tried for the last three months and I've dealt with it for the last five years. What I will say, I will not open up another business in Hayward. I won't. If I'm given the opportunity to sell this business and walk out as soon as I can, I will. I am, I'm absolutely sick of it. I'm tired of it, I've reached out to everybody. I've had the Sergeants of Police come, they're tired of it. They don't have help. I called the city, the city calls me to call the police. My last trial was two weeks ago, when I came to the City Hall at eight in the morning and I asked the security guard, I said, "I want to wait here for Chris." That's the manager underneath Mark Salinas. I said, "I could wait all day." And I said, "Either you tell me to leave or I could wait for him." And he asked me to leave. So a person that paid business taxes for the last 30 years can't even speak to somebody in the City Hall, so I left. After that, I haven't emailed and I'm not going to anymore. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Our next speaker is Christina, is it Kavnis? Yes.
Greetings, Mayor, Councilmembers and Assembly. My name is Christina Quanis. I'm a longtime resident of Hayward and a daughter of longtime residents Betty and Iver Quanis. I've sent a few emails to the Mayor, the City Council, the Chief of Police this month and this morning I sent probably 60 or so pictures and videos of the problems that the Beechwood Community of Homes suffers during 4th of July festivities. I'm not going to go over everything that I put in that, those emails because that's already on the record. What I would like to do with my time with you right now is to highlight some big ideas from a very influential book that I think has some very good ideas for making Hayward a vibrant town and safe community. It's The Tipping Point by Malcolm Gladwell. And I would like to talk about three things, big ideas from his book. Broken windows, which is a metaphor for nuisance crimes, tipping points and how that surrounds the crime wave that we're seeing. First, crime is an inevitable result of disorder. The broken window theory states that if a window is broken and left unrepaired, people will notice and assume that no one is in charge, no one cares, anything goes. Crime is contagious. The epidemic theory of crime is that when a broken window, broken windows can quickly escalate to a broken floor, a broken building, a broken block, and then finally, a broken community. So minor, seemingly insignificant quality of life crimes are tipping points for violent crime. That's the bad news. The good news is crime is preventable and crime waves can be reversed. Another big idea from this book is that time need not be spent on the criminal, but on tweaking the smallest detail of our environment. Environment tipping points are things that can be changed. My idea and the adopted block fits in perfectly with this. Target your worst crime areas, invest there, invest your time, your money, your effort, your energies, your human resources. Clean up the graffiti, pick up trash, sounds like that's happening already, yay. Mop up the muck, repair, paint, build, maintain, plant a garden, have events, revitalize neighborhoods, criminal activity will go down. So summarizing, I'm here today in an effort to do what I can to address the 4th of July broken window that tipped after the first year after the pandemic. I do what I can as a concerned citizen who has invested here and wants to stay. I appeal to you, people in positions of power, influence and authority, to use that power and more to steer Hayward to new heights where vibrant neighborhoods and safe communities are the norm, not just for 4th of July, but all days of the year. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, appreciate that. Next speaker is Ms. Jeanette Hernandez.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Councilmembers. First of all, it was really nice to see Armando up here, former Puente Estadio Lancers, so go Lancers. Go Lancers. Thank you for making time for me this evening. I had the opportunity to visit our sister city, Arandas Jalisco, Mexico this August and they asked me to relay their just profound gratitude for hosting them in July. A special thank you, gracias, to City Councilor Sermeño, Mayor and the Council for taking time and your resources, again, for hosting them in July. They are looking forward to your visit to Arandas and they asked me to share an invitation letter, which I will do in just a moment. And in addition to that, they also asked me to share a gift and these gifts are artisanal traditional products of Arandas. They are hoping that you will enjoy and share them. And I wish I could have brought more, but unfortunately, Alaska Airlines does have a limit in their luggage capacity. But all to say, again, muchas gracias, again, thank you. And they're looking forward to just grow this partnership, the sister city, and thank you once again.
Thank you. Thank you. And I don't, I'm trying to, oh.
Thank you again.
Thank you. And please tell the Mayor, thank you. The sister city is Arandas and it's in the state of Jalisco. And if anybody has ever wondered where tacos de canaizada come from, it's the state of Jalisco in Arandas. So thank you very much. Okay, so I am going to move on to our next speaker is, is it Cjam Ko?
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Cjam Casey and I'm a junior at a Royal High School with SOS SkyWest. And I'm here on behalf of students, families and neighbors who use SkyWest as their background, backyard, green space. And I just want to like provide some like background information of SkyWest, although you guys are probably aware of it. But SkyWest is 126 acres of public land directly behind Kennedy Park, which is a rare contiguous open space courtyard in Hayward. And it was a public golf course for nearly 60 years and sits on city-owned airport property. And ecologically, SkyWest is more than just mowed grass. Community observations and photos have documented native Western Pond turtles using the pond at SkyWest. And the turtle at California's only, the turtle is California's only pond, I mean, sorry, the turtle is California's only native freshwater turtle and is a state species of special concern, which, and like, of course, we want to care for them because they're endangered. And protecting ponds and creek habitat, here's a state forward and like local action that we can prevent for loss, which is by like us being here and like me talking to you guys and like a single vote could really like make impact. And keeping SkyWest as green, permeable, land strengthens the regional habitat network and buffers neighborhoods from heat and noise. And because I know like there's a lot of complaints coming from the neighborhood being like, oh, we hear a lot of like airport noises, so like keeping the, like lessening the airport expansion would be really helpful in creating a good community. And this is one of the few places where a single vote can protect nature, reduce population exposure for working-class neighborhoods and give young people a nearby safe place to play and learn. So please choose SkyWest as like an open space. Thank you.
Thank you. If you guys are from a Royal High School, you guys timed this perfectly because we got the, we got the, we got your cards the other, today, apparently, so. Okay, next speaker is, is it Alejandra Acampo? No, Adriana Acampo.
Hi, City Councilmembers and hi, Mayor. Thank you for letting me speak. And for starters, I'm Jade, a junior at a Royal High School and I'm also here representing SOS SkyWest to speak on saving SkyWest's open space for our community. For starters, many of us believe that the City of Hayward's plan with SkyWest does not align with what many people of our community want, going even as far back as four years ago when you were first making your plans on what to do with this land. The city asked for community input in round one of their decision-making and the majority wanted SkyWest's open space for our community or to be used as recreation, for recreational purposes. But the thing is that when you announce your actual plan for SkyWest, it did not reflect what our community asked for, with only less than 20% of it actually being recreational and as open space, disregarding the community input the city asked for. So we have been fighting to save this land to this day, which I feel speaks volumes. The plan of bulldozing the habitat of the Western Pond turtles who resided, who reside in the pond of SkyWest are California's only native turtle who are a step away from being endangered. To fill up that pond to build airplane hangars for wealthy people not from our community and after a public records request, we saw that the majority of the people were not from our community and a lot of them came from areas such as Palo Alto and only a small percentage actually lived in Hayward. So we believe that our community should have a bigger voice in land use decisions over people who are not living here. And many people in our community want SkyWest's open space. Our online petition has nearly 1,600 signatures and a strong group of people from all ages, from youth to adults, fighting for this land to be open space. There are professors that call, professors and college students from Chabot and Cal State East Bay, even ones that go to SFSU who previously lived here or commute to that school. And teachers and high school students from Moreau, Arroyo, Kip and SLZ and Mount Eden and Hayward High School who have joined our campaign to fight towards saving this land and are against what the City of Hayward plans on doing it. We want SkyWest's open space and thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker, and I apologize if I mispronounce this, is it, is it Shili, Shingyi Mai? And I apologize if I messed that up.
Okay, so, good evening, everyone. My name is Shingyi Mai. I'm a Royal, I'm a junior at a Royal High School right now, so SkyWest is a home for Western Pond turtles and mountain butterflies. And I think it's also a place like where people can learn more about nature and it's a place like where people can relax, have fun and find peace. Because since like me and my friend have been on a walk at SkyWest for a couple times and we encounter a lot of people from different age group hang out there and that just really made me think that like we should not trade away our natural future for people that are not from our community, well, like people from our community want to keep it as an open space. And I also think that we should preserve SkyWest as open space for our environment, our community and our future generation and thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Guillermo Rivera? Rivera? Guillermo? Oh, there you go. Oh, oh, you don't, you, oh, no, okay. Next speaker is, is it Walid Ahmed?
Hello, Councilmembers.
Raise the mic.
Oh.
There you go.
It's working? Okay. Hello, Councilmembers. My name is Walid Ahmed and I'm here to represent SOS SkyWest Youth Outreach Group. I'm a junior at a Royal High School and I'm here to talk about SOS SkyWest. And SOS SkyWest is something that deeply matters to me, not only for me, but to our community and the City of Hayward. It's not only important because of the massive lack of open space in our area, but because it represents something even greater, a safe, open space where children could have fun. More and more recently, we've seen more children stay inside their house, some because they choose to, but more because they have nowhere else to go, because some families, they don't have bigger enough backyards for the activities that they want to do. And SOS SkyWest could be that place where those children and families could have fun and do those activities. And aside from that, in this specific meeting, we talked about how we want a greener and a more natural City of Hayward and SOS SkyWest could add to that. Aside from that, it's also important for nature because many times we've seen on TV where we saw news like of endangered animals being extinct and we've also wondered to ourselves, why didn't someone step in? And this is our chance, we are that someone. We could do something about it because if we don't, the Western Pond turtles right here in our own city will be gone and they'll be gone forever. Yeah. Next thing you know, we'll be on the news. SkyWest should be revived to its full potential for a place where people could, you know, do stuff. And yeah, open space for the community and for the next generation. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sandra Frost. And I just wanted to acknowledge the students from a Royal High School. You guys were succinct and right on the point, so thank you very much for that. Ms. Frost.
Good evening, everybody. I don't know if anymore of the students are speaking. I just wanted to say for the record, I am so proud of them. They have just researched, stepped up, they had the courage to come and speak in front of you. So I also am an adult member of SOS SkyWest. We love that green space. It is magnificent since it rewilded after being let go as a golf course. It is magnificent and what we envision is a contiguous parkway going from Kennedy Park through SkyWest. It adjoins the San Lorenzo Community Park space. It can potentially connect to the Bay Trailways and it will be fabulous. And it's a safe space for families to come together, ride bikes, learn how to ride bikes, explore nature. We've identified native species that have returned to the golf course and some of them are borderline being endangered species. There's a magnificent butterfly grove on the back of the property that's like the fifth, the fifth largest on the West Coast. It is fabulous and we know that it's closed off and we're not supposed to be in there, we fully are aware of that, but we welcome you to go on kind of curated walks with us. And I, the students said it all. And the students said it all. I mean, they are the future, they deserve this chance to have a natural space in Hayward. And I sent in my comments by email. I hope you all had a chance to read what I had to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Our next speaker is Randy Waggi. I always mispronounce your last name. Is it Waggi?
Waggi.
Waggi, yeah.
I go that way a lot of times, too. Okay, well, I'm going to speak on two things, actually. What was it, last weekend? I went to the Bell Plastics Open House, and it's really cool. And the crazy thing is, I've never been in the building, and the building houses like, a Pez museum that is unbelievable, and the other stuff that's in there. And the guy even told me they had a couple of ET things. He thinks he has the biggest collection of ET stuff. And I'm like, oh my God. So I'm just saying, maybe the City of Hayward should be like, promoting this a little bit more, saying, hey, when you come to Hayward, check out this museum, because it is amazing. It really is something that everybody should be proud of. And then, of course, I'm also speaking on SOS SkyWest. I too am very proud of these kids. I went to Arroyo High School, and it's just amazing. I could have never done this at 15 or 16, you know, speaking in a, in public like this. City of Hayward, I love that golf course. It is really cool. During the pandemic, I used to walk it. The ponds are really cool. And you know, when you look at it, the East Bay Park District, right now, they were looking in Antioch, there's a Roddy Golf Course, and they're doing the same thing. They're going to make it into an open space park. So if Antioch can do it, I really think Hayward should be doing it, too. It's an important thing. I don't know. Lastly, I'm just saying, you know, we only live for so long. You know, we only have so many years here. What is your legacy? Do you want to, you know, help people and build parks? I mean, a couple of days ago, I went to the opening of Unity Park, and that's kind of an unincorporated Hayward, I think, cherry land? And that was amazing. So imagine something like that, building parks. People are going to remember you for building a park, not for giving, you know, more industrial buildings, more wealth to corporations, more money to, you know, rich people at the airport. The airport has all kinds of land, they have all kinds of money. So please, really think about this. A park is a great thing. It's a great thing for people, all through the generations. They will remember this and love this kind of thing. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Let's see, our next speaker is TJ. I'm going to go online now. It's TJ from Hayward Concerned Citizens.
Hi, good evening, council. I'm TJ with Hayward Concerned Citizens, and I just wanted to speak on the Regis Village Community Information Meeting that was held at the main library in partnership with BACS this past Saturday. I know there were several of you present there, and I'm glad the city finally set up a full town hall presentation. We spoke briefly with Councilmember Roach after the meeting wrapped up, and I strongly believe that our residents need a big dose of opportunity to be able to speak and feel heard on this issue. I wish the meeting had been longer to allow more Q&amp;A time, there was a big turnout, and I wish time limit had been allotted to those at the meeting who were off-topic or monopolized the time. I came away from the meeting hearing the very same worries our Hayward Concerned Citizens addressed from the first time this appeared as a consent item around August 2022. Safety, transparency, neighborhood and downtown security, and the close proximity to Bret Hart School. City Manager Kelly McAdoo and her team explained to our group two years ago that because Saint Regis was a property that was already licensed for use, it didn't require a public hearing for land use process at that time. Those consulted on the project were only local stakeholders, the school community, field experts, and communities with lived experience. So for many, Regis Village feels like something new. At Saturday's meeting, one speaker shared an incident of an aggressive individual who left Regis and was causing issues downtown. Another speaker shared concerns about how our downtown would revitalize and generate revenue if we are, quote, "the homeless capital of the county," unquote. I know Hayward aims to be at the forefront of providing a holistic campus as a resource to get people off the streets. I think most of us agree that something needs to be done to help manage these folks, but worry about the potential unpredictability of their behaviors. Going forward, my hopes are these, that there be another town hall or public hearing opportunity scheduled soon for more public comment, that BACS is transparent if they plan to follow through on their original proposal of adding a secured crisis stabilization unit in a separate facility on the campus in the near future. And finally, that there be a detailed plan in place from Regis to address any de-escalation issues that may come up. I heard nothing about onsite, in security-specific personnel, just mention of a monitoring system, cameras and devices with a contracted security service. Our schools themselves, on average, have had around 300 calls for service by HPD every two months, and I hope that statistic isn't compounded by whatever may occur related to Regis Village. I thank you for listening, and I really hope you'll continue to reassure our residents as this facility becomes fully operational. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Roe Aguilar.
Welcome back, everyone. Roe Aguilar. I have some comments on number five on the consent calendar. Mr. Mayor, should I say what I want to say now, or wait for the?
Just go ahead and say them now, since you're on.
Okay. So I would like to express support for this project, parcel aid on form. I know it's already approved, but I'm being positive here and expressing support for this great development. And I also wanted to do a shout-out for the staff and the council and the developers who cooperated in developing this project on the former Caltrans property, parcel eight, I believe it is. This parcel, for those of you that haven't read the material, there's going to be, well, there's several parcels, and there's going to be high-density affordable housing managed well by experienced managers with resources. That is amazing. There's going to be a lower-density market-rate housing. There's going to be, I believe, a commercial or retail component that will provide 33 permanent jobs. And there's also a donation of open space too hard for this area, this neighborhood. I'm just blown away. I urge the City Council to encourage more mixed-use development with inclusionary housing, either rental or owner-occupy, for all income levels. And this model supports the goal of inclusive neighborhoods and building the middle class. So I'd like to see more of these developments in Hayward. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Alejandra Wall.
Good evening, council members. I'm here to join with the speakers that joined previously, to urge you to reject the proposed tree preservation ordinance amendment that you will be discussing later tonight. While it claims to protect trees, in reality, it is clearing a path for widespread removal, specifically of the trees at SkyWest. First and foremost, this ordinance is built around-
Ms. Wall?
Yes.
Ms. Wall, I hate to interrupt you, but this item is going to come to us later in the meeting. Did you want to wait until then to make your comments, or do you want to make them now?
If I can make them now, because I'm unable to stay until quick.
Okay, go right ahead.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, and I apologize.
So, yeah, for sure. So I'll just back up a little bit. The ordinance is built around removal and mitigation, not preservation. It's allowing developers to cut down mature trees in exchange for replacement saplings or in lieu fees. We all know saplings and money cannot replace the habitat, carbon storage, or cooling benefits of mature tree canopy. Secondly, SkyWest is clearly the target of this ordinance. Residents have spoken very passionately before this council tonight and at previous meetings to preserve it as an open space. If this ordinance passes, it will greenlight development that destroys hundreds of mature trees, specifically targeting SkyWest and mislabeling it as airport property. Losing the trees of SkyWest will worsen air quality, intensify heat, and rob Hayward families of a rare accessible park. Finally, this ordinance prioritizes developers over residents. It embeds multiple exceptions that make removal easier whenever it conflicts with infrastructure or profit. That is not preservation, that is deregulation. Council members, adopting this resolution will be remembered as the decision that paved the way to the destruction of SkyWest. I urge you to listen to the community and save SkyWest. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see, I don't have any more online. Okay. I don't have any more people online, but I believe Councilmember Zermeño had a comment. Go ahead, council member.
Mayor, thank you very much. I take this opportunity to highlight a couple of small businesses. The owners are here. One is Mr. Guillermo Rivera, and I mean, that's his wife. Go over to Anna's Restaurant on Grand and Jackson. Their grilled jalapenos are to die for, along with their frijoles and everything else. And right across the street from the parking lot is Shambrack Liquors, and that's owned by Nabi over there. And earlier, we had a presentation from Aranda's Sister City, which is the tequila capital of the world, but not for you kids. But he has a very good collection of tequilas from Aranda's Sister City Personal Service. So go on and pay attention to two small businesses right near our downtown. And Mr. Nabi, I'm glad that you're here today, and hopefully we can help you out. Mucho gusto, gracias por venir.
Thank you. So I don't have any more cards for public comment, so I would like to close public comment and move on to our city manager's comments.
Thank you, Mayor. I will go quickly. I know we've spent a lot of time already, and so we want to highlight three August events this evening. One was National Night Out. And so National Night Out took place on August 5th, and a lot of advance work goes into it, and we celebrate something along with the entire nation. This year, community members in partnership with HPD organized 32 separate National Night Out neighborhood block parties, and I know many of you went to them, they were just lovely. So thank you to everyone in our community. These events were attended by, of course, our community members, yourselves, Mayor Salinas and council members, representatives of city departments, including very prominently our Hayward Fire Department, as well as Congressman Eric Swalwell's office, Bart, Hayward Unified School District, and the Office of Alameda County District Attorney, Ursula Jones Dixon. I'd like to thank Chief Matthews, HPD, and everyone who made National Night Out in Hayward such an enjoyable and great success. Of course, I cannot not mention the Weeks Branch reopening. As the council knows, we celebrated the reopening of the Weeks Branch with a ribbon cutting last Saturday. The celebration featured live performances and donor acknowledgements, and provided attendees with a sneak preview of the new space, which officially opened yesterday. And it included a lot of wonderful replacements. You saw it was done very well in coordination with several other departments, and I really want to thank everyone who helped make this a success. The branch also now has a new Friends of the Library bookstore, which yesterday sold $4 worth of books. I just want to say that, which is quite a lot when you consider how cheap the books are. So encourage all of you to go to the Weeks Branch and buy some books there. And this project was completed with community development block grant funds and special revenue sources, such as grants from HPN, the Friends of the Hayward Library, and donations from the Donna Ellen Edward E. Martins Foundation to fund these much-needed improvements in the branch. And lastly, coming up on Thursday, the Hayward Downtown Summer Street Party. This returns for its final event this season, and I hope all of you will be able to attend. This is presented by the Hayward Chamber of Commerce with support from the City of Hayward. And the downtown summer street parties take place on B, right down here between Foothill and Mission Boulevards, and Main Street between A and C. Admission is free for all, and this is a wonderful opportunity for us all to come out, support Hayward businesses, and to just get to know our neighbors. So please do join us on Thursday. Thank you.
Madam City Manager, how much is a book in the bookstore for kids?
It can be really cheap, so 25 cents typically, but then we do have 10-cent books, and they have special sales where you take a whole bag of books for $5. It is really, really cheap, and really high-quality books also, so thank you.
Absolutely. Yeah, and also, I also wanted to acknowledge, you know, the street parties, you know, the chamber and the city have certainly, you know, are a big part of this, but also, I would be remiss if I did not include the Hayward Area Park and Recreation District. HARD has done a phenomenal job at stepping up and supporting the street parties this year. So thank you very much, thank you for your announcements. And I will close this item, and I will move on to our action items. And we have our consent calendar. I do have a couple of items that want to be pulled. I'm going to pull item number five. I have two public comments on item number five, and I don't know of anyone else. You want to make a comment on two? Okay. Okay, so why don't we do this? I'll take five out of the consent calendar for now, and I'll ask for a motion on-
I'll move.
Moved by Councilmember Goldstein.
Second.
The second by Councilmember Syrup, and as a seconder, you have a question and a comment.
For number two.
Yeah, for number two.
Just, I'm really excited to see that we're receiving a grant for this nighttime safety enhancement plan. I know this is something that Councilmember Bonilla has talked about a lot, about the creation of lighting districts, or just assessing where we don't have enough lighting in our communities. I am curious, and I'm not sure who the right person to ask about this is, but will we receive a map of neighborhoods where lighting is very low as part of this process? I'm not sure if this is a Public Works question or not.
Yes.
We will? Okay, great. And I think just to put this problem into perspective, as I was knocking doors during my campaign for election, there were some neighborhoods at night where that was their main concern, is our streets aren't well-lit enough. And so imagine not feeling safe to go out into your neighborhood after a certain hour. Your neighborhood is only accessible to you from 8:00 AM until 8:00 PM, and after that, either you're afraid of car traffic, or you're afraid of crime. But people don't think about lighting when they think about public safety, but it's a really critical component of it, and making our neighborhoods more accessible, more walkable for more hours of the day. So I'm just, this is great work from our city staff team, so I want to thank you for it, and I'm just excited to move this forward.
Thank you. So before we vote, I'd like to open up for public comment, and does anybody, I don't see any public comment online regarding the consent calendar. I do see one online. TJ from Hayward Concerned Citizens.
Thanks for recognizing me, I appreciate that. Good evening, council, again. I'm TJ from HCC. I was pulling item number seven, the Hayward Rides Program. Should I go ahead and speak on it?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, sounds good. I appreciate the ambition to improve our residents' health and to reduce vehicle emissions and traffic, but I wanted to speak to some current concerns I have around the reality of our situation here in Hayward. It seems the tendency in our city is to push projects that may only represent a small sliver of what our present population wants or prioritizes as its need. Biking for pleasure is one thing, but we aren't Amsterdam, and we aren't UC Davis. Hayward is a different community with many commuters, many of which can't travel long distances in a practical way by bike, nor can they easily bring home groceries by bike. Bikes also don't work well to transport our preschoolers or frail elderly. There are those in the hills who can't benefit because there are areas too steep to bike, or that can't safely accommodate bike lanes sharing already narrow road space. There need to be more bus lines in the hills? Many remain suspended. I have a neighbor who's dealing with the fate of our local Amtrak station possibly closing. He bikes to the train station to work in Silicon Valley. So what uses the bike if our bus and train routes are being eliminated? I realize this agenda item is driven by a sizable grant, and I think that's great, but if the goal is for our younger generation to set the tone for future generations of regular bike riders, then there are two things I would ask our city to place a focus on when implementing the Hayward Rides Program. The first is to find a way to mitigate the distracted and restless drivers that whiz through- that whiz through on a daily basis. We don't have robust and consistent safety enforcement measures in place for our children to safely bike around schools. My second ask is around teaching good bike-riding etiquette. You can provide bike enthusiasm, bike access, bike supplies, bike maintenance, and bike routes, but it isn't sustainable unless you incorporate good bike etiquette, especially for our students. Some prefer using e-bikes over traditional bikes, which go entirely too fast and jeopardize pedestrian safety. There have also been occasional social media posts that I think Peggy Gurnsey was alluding to, reporting groups of youth weaving in and out of lanes, blocking traffic, yelling profanities, spitting at drivers, et cetera. I'm not suggesting everyone who has a bike is irresponsible, but I would suggest that to cultivate a culture of bicycling in the future, we need to add in positive ways to promote universal education and safety for all who currently share the roads. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller is Tyler Dragone.
Thank you, City Council. I just want to say that I definitely want to voice support as a member of Bike Hayward for the Hayward Rides Program. It's super important to get people out of cars. Our roads are so clogged. I am a bike commuter. We need more bike commuters. This is a great opportunity for so many in Hayward. So thank you for devoting staff time to this program.
Thank you. Thank you. So I don't have any more comments on this, or comment cards on this. So I will close public comment. And moved by Councilmember Goldstein, seconded by Councilmember Syrup. And if there are no further questions or comments, Madam City Clerk, we can we can vote.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Since this is the consent calendar...
Oh, we can. If there are no objections, it will unanimously pass. Thank you very much. So our next item will be item number five, which has been pulled. And so we do have a public comment. And I think it's Jennifer. And I apologize, I cannot read your handwriting for your last name, but is it? I'm not even going to... But Jennifer, is Jennifer here? Okay, come on up. But I'm sure you're going to tell me your last name when you get here.
I've been living on... My name's Jennifer Feeny, F-E-N-Y. I've been a tenant at Bridge Court for fifteen years. My heart is broken, and I feel blindsided. We were told that renovation plans were extended until the end of 2026. With that, I personally have made plans, scheduling knee surgery, and just found out on August 21st that they want to move us out within ninety days. That's their plan during the holidays. I have paid the city close to $100,000 myself in rent, and I'm not sure for what. As they've stated that it's inhabitable and the conditions are really bad. I have tested in court for the city of Hayward to get a problem tenant out. I have been onsite security guard and have kept the squatters out. I've helped put out a fire that a known arsonist started. The only joy that I've had living there is the open space behind me and coexisting with the wildlife and habitat that so many species depend on for survival there. And now I'm finding out that they are eliminating that as well, that whole area. I've watched generations of deer grow up there, so many species, and it's just, it's really, really sad. I feel like it's the last open space that divides Hayward and Castor Valley. There are hundred-year-old almond trees there from the historic Sribage Farm that are probably be eliminated as well. If, my concern is that, I'm wondering why, when the city of Hayward took over for Caltrans, why they didn't conduct their own environmental study and have let us live there for as long as we have and have ignored several county code regulations at this property. Several. If it was any other landlord, they would be held accountable. But the city of Hayward has not been held accountable. I think it's very interesting that they want to escalate moving us out after RCD received the results of an environmental study, which I have asked for a copy of and have not received one as of yet. The tenants of Bridge Court, we are a little community. A lot of us are seniors. And we have kept up the landscaping here. And the property, we have kept it clean. We're quiet, and we're close. And I feel like I've paid... I just found out that the city doesn't even own the property. It's still state-owned. So I'm wondering why I paid you guys close to $100,000 in rent to live in disrepair. I'm asking you to vote no on this item and allow us to keep our homes as long as possible, especially, three months is just not, not fair for tenants who have been there fifteen-plus years.
Jennifer, your time has expired. And thank you. And I'm going to, I have to call on the next, to the next speaker.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Juan Figueroa.
Good evening. My name is Juan Figueroa. I'm here to speak on behalf of the tenants being asked to move from the Bridge Court. The city hall meeting was presented as a discussion of early relocation, but that's not what's happening. Tenants are set to receive a ninety-day notice to vacate in December with no guarantee of return and confirmed construction start date. That's not early relocation, that's permanent displacement. Under California law, tenants cannot be forced to move out until they're offered comparable, safe, and affordable replacement housing. Right now, that housing does not exist. The city hasn't provided three specific options. Funding for the actual project is not even secured, and the developments that might house tenants won't be ready until 2025 or later, some not until 2028. Tenants, some tenants are not refusing to relocate. We're simply asking the city to follow the law. Don't push people out based on an unfunded plan. Delay the move-out deadline until construction is guaranteed. We ask for truth, transparency, and fairness, and we ask the city to do what is right. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next public comment is Ann Maris from Grove Way Neighborhoods.
Hello, Dr. Maris here. I'm a resident of Castor Valley on the border of Hayward, and I want to speak up for the Bridge Court tenants. I've lived, you know, across the street from there for a long time. My mom was a tenant of Caltrans, and the generation before me worked decades for the right to buy our homes. These tenants, they need to move out. Rushing them out of their homes when they're good neighbors. They're sitting on the border of these freeway on-ramps. You're allowing a second pot shop to go in at the Walgreens site there. There's a liquor store. There's a lot of urban issues going on there that involve people that don't necessarily live here. And the tenants at Bridge Court take care of that place. If you kick them out early when you have this project with no, you know, secure plan or funding, that's great. If it's a good development, it's great. If it provides homes, that's great. But these guys need their homes. You need to not kick them out. I don't agree with item five. I think you need to vote no to accelerate their evictions. Their homes are in the same condition they've been in. You know, it's, Caltrans was not a great landlord, and they still don't have a great landlord. We want to see improvements in the neighborhood. It hasn't had any, anything good added. It's just going downhill. So I'd like to hear more about why the pot club, the second pot club's being allowed in right there when you want to put in a bunch of families. So please vote no. Please allow them to keep their homes, at least until you have a funded plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Our... I don't have any more cards on this, and I don't have any more callers, but I did want to ask our Director of Development Services if you can respond and just kind of give a, sort of a summary and sort of where we're at on this project and sort of the, the next steps.
Sure, happy to. And I would also defer to my deputy director, Ms. Morales, if there's some, anything else that she may like to add if I missed something here. So the, the project itself that RCD has approval for attempted to receive project funding about a year ago and were unsuccessful. Had they received that funding, I think we'd be under construction right about now. They have applied for another round. It could be a whole nother year before we, before they have secured that funding, assuming that they are successful in this round of funding. Project construction is then anticipated to take about two years following that. The original development disposition and loan agreement between the city and RCD spoke very specifically about zero displacement. And so the item that is before council tonight is to modify that provision of the DDLA to allow, to modify that provision about zero displacement. In our conversations with RCD and understanding the timing for the project and the significant amount of deferred maintenance that the property needs, that the concern was that we really wanted to encourage the tenants to find better housing and worked with RCD to come up with a plan with their, their consultants that may sort of sweeten the deal and assist the residents at Bridge Court to find a better place to be. And so that, that was sort of the intention, was to, to encourage folks to, to maybe move out sooner rather than having to, you know, stay in that property where there's some significant issues that need to be addressed and try to move them into, to better housing. And so that was the whole, the, the point behind the, the change in, in thought process right now and what is before council. Did I miss anything, or is there anything else you'd like to add?
I think the only thing I want to clarify is, one, the previous DDA had a zero-displacement goal. So we knew it would be impossible to have zero displacement. One, because tenants have to be income-eligible for the new project. And then we also know that there may be some tenants that choose, because of the length of time, that they would be outside of their units because during construction, they would have to find alternative housing anyway. And so that two-year timeframe really turns it into a permanent relocation scenario anyway because it is such a long time to remove somebody from their home. So this, there's this element of it actually being a permanent relocation during the construction time. And so they, the tenants would have the ability to return to the project if they're income-eligible. They would have priority placement when they want to return. And I think it's also important to note that the city has already complied with the federal and state relocation requirements as part of the settlement agreement with Caltrans. So tenants who occupied the property during that time were provided the federal relocation benefits. Tenants that leased the units after that, leased the units, and it's acknowledged in their lease that the state has already complied and that they're leasing these units on a temporary basis, knowing that it's part of this larger redevelopment project. So what we're offering as part of the additional is an incentive and also to help kind of mitigate the impacts. It's really a moving incentive to try to help facilitate the move.
Okay, thank you. I did have a question from Councilmember Bonilla.
Thank you. So just a couple of clarifying questions. So this is encouraging them to accelerate their relocation. It's not requiring that they now have to be vacated within the next ninety days. Can you just help me understand the sort of encouraging versus requirement of what this is accelerating?
So that's correct. We are offering an incentive to relocate early. Those incentives might change if it takes longer. And if we take any action that proceeds to eviction, we would have to consult with the city attorney's office and council before taking on this step. At the moment, it would be telling them about our intent to relocate them, starting the relocation process, and offering them incentive.
Can you just share for us what that relocation process looks like? Like, where would they go? Or would they be able to stay in Hayward? Because, I mean, it sounds like these residents have pretty deep roots in Hayward and, you know, trying to relocate them. I just want to understand what that looks like. And then I'm also concerned about this zero-displacement not being honored because, you know, we, we definitely don't want to be contributing to an already exacerbated issue of homelessness in our community. So can you address that as well, please?
Certainly. So I think I might need help from RCD, who's, their representatives are online right now. But I think the, they're working with a relocation consultant that will provide the tenants with assistance in locating alternative housing. It would be based on what the tenants prefer. So if they prefer to stay in Hayward, if they want to look elsewhere, they would have a lot of say in what their, their preferences are. And then from there, they would work with the tenant to actually, if they choose, to help them find moving assistance, find a company that would help move them. If the tenant prefers to self-move, then there would be a stipend provided for their self-move. So it would be really personalized assistance for the tenants in finding the relocation. I want to open up to Christian Mize Tan, if he has any, if I missed anything.
Hi, can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. Hi, I'm Christian Mize Tan, project manager with RCD, working on a project. I think Christina summed it up well. In terms of the services that would be provided to help. Yes, we're working with a relocation consultant. This is specifically what they do. They help navigate this process in different types of subsidized rentals such as these. And to help folks find good housing when they have to be relocated temporarily or permanently. And so Christina summed it up. But generally, that's correct. As part of this effort, they have individual, at the consultancy, who goes and meets with, will meet with each of the households individually and then set up like a list of goals and priorities for each of them about where they want to go, where they want to, you know, what their budget is, what they're looking for, and come up with an individualized plan for each of the households about where they want, you know, what their goals are and what the next steps are. There's no limits on where folks can go. I know there's a question of if they can stay in Hayward or not. You know, there's, from our side, there's no options. You know, people, if they want to stay in Hayward, great, cool. You know, people, if they want to stay in Hayward, great, cool. If they want to move with family to Florida, also fine. All of that can be accommodated. We're also supportive of tenants using the incentive payment if it's possible, as one of the previous Bridge Court's tenants did, is to put that towards a down payment on, for sale housing, potentially a BMR unit. So that is also an option. And so after the consultant meets with each of the households individually, they'll come up with an individualized plan. And then the consultant can help them through the logistics of finding what options are out there, setting up tours, doing paperwork, and just kind of ultimately kind of working as sort of housing agents through the process, including, you know, hiring, getting close to moving companies. And then, you know, the move cost will be covered as well.
Got it, thank you. And then my last question is, I know that some of these units are going to be designated as affordable, right? So I guess what my question is, is are any of them going to be designated for deeply affordable? Because if we know some of these, you know, people living there now may not be able to come back because of affordability concerns, can't we just head that off by making some of these more deeply affordable so that they could come back with low, low incomes?
I think it's more of a concern of some might be over-income for the units.
Oh, I see. That, okay, got it.
If Christian has anything to add on that one. Because I do believe the project includes some 30% AMI units, 50, 60. So we have a good range.
That's correct. Yeah, that's correct. It's got 30s, 50s, and 60s. So there are the 30% AMIs. We'd have to look at the exact, you know, tenants' incomes versus with the, you know, allowable when we're leasing up. But, you know, there are pretty low, pretty deeply affordable units planned already. I think as much as anything, just a matter of timing because, you know, ultimately, in our best-case scenario right now, we wouldn't start construction until October of 2026, which would mean the building wouldn't open until fall of 2028 in our best-case scenario right now. So we just, we already know we're looking three-plus years out, thinking through, you know, what's best in the interim.
Got it, thank you. So if this is passed tonight, it's not accelerating the eviction of the members there to 90 days? What it's doing is it's offering them incentives to look at options over the next 90 days, right?
Correct, there is no eviction. This is moving assistance. And there's monetary amounts that are tied to that as well as all of the support that was described by Christian and Ms. Morales.
I really appreciate that clarification and thank you so much for addressing my questions. And thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Roach.
Thank you. And thank you, Councilmember Bonilla, because I think you kind of got to the root of the problem that I was interested in, that it's sort of just a different expectation, right? Originally, the relocation assistance wouldn't be triggered until the developers got the funding to start construction, is that right? But instead, we're asking, this is asking us to accelerate that relocation assistance to start sooner, is that right? So it was always there?
Correct, correct. They were always going to be temporary, at least temporarily relocated while their units were being rehabbed. But that wasn't going to happen until the new portion of the project was constructed. And so now we're experiencing even further delays related to that. And so it seemed important to at least revisit that provision of the DDLA and then move forward with maybe some other options that could be available to the tenants.
Okay, so we're just offering assistance sooner. And then the other thing is, right, so obviously, the sort of concern is, why can't we just stay here? You know, we enjoy it here and this is working for us until construction begins. But what I'm hearing is the deferred maintenance has gotten to some critical point now where like the cost to repair all of this is not something the developer is going to put into, or would it be because we're going to be demolishing the place anyway?
Correct. I mean, I think at this point, this would be city making investment in the property. And most of the improvements that were, would be needed would be not, would not be retained with the new development of the project. So that's the challenge.
And I think, you know, what I'm hearing a little bit was this feeling like, what, we're out of here? You know, we have to be out of here in 90 days. And I think the answer is, that's not true. There's just assistance offered sooner than the original plan.
Correct. And the incentive may change depending on the length of time that they remain.
Right, right. We're trying to make it enticing to sort of help people move sooner. Okay, all right, thank you. That definitely helps, appreciate it.
Thank you. Councilmember Armenio.
One weird question, is there still 10 families that we're dealing with?
There are six households currently.
Six, six families. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Councilmember Andrews.
When we found out, thank you for the staff report. When we found out there might be this need for acceleration, how much outreach was done to the families?
So we had a meeting with the households, I think it was August, I'm going to, I said today's date, but it was July 19th, about a month ago, I believe, just to let them know that this was proposed and also so that they would have the opportunity to come and share their feelings and thoughts about the proposal. So we did have one meeting with them and they've had the opportunity to reach out and ask follow-up questions.
Okay, thank you. I don't know if there's a comment here. Thank you.
The meeting was on July 21st.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I don't see any more, I don't see any more questions and I don't have any more questions online. And so I will close public comment on this item and then I will entertain a motion.
I'll move it.
Moved by Councilmember Goldstein.
A second.
Seconded by Councilmember Bonilla. And this is a consent item. And if there are no objections.
Actually, with this item, we get to vote.
Okay, we'll do a council vote, okay.
I'll go ahead and refresh and see if we could see the item on your iPads. Councilmember Sire. Thank you.
And the item passes with six yeses and one no. Okay, thank you. We will move on to item number nine, which is the Tree Preservation Ordinance. Introduce an ordinance amending the Hayward Municipal Code to update Chapter 10, Planning, Zoning and Subdivision, Article 15, Tree Preservation Ordinance, establishing new regulatory guidelines for the designation, removal, and mitigation of protected trees in the city of Hayward, proposed amendments to the 2026 Master Fee Schedule and finding the proposed project and finding the proposed project is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, pursuant to Section 15307, Class 7, and Section 15308, Class 8 of the SEQA guidelines. And I believe our Director of Development Services, Sarah Bowser, is going to kick this off in.
I will.
Whoa, I was going to say, that doesn't look like.
I wanted to make room with the dais for all of the important folks that will be presenting this item to you tonight. So I thought that I would start the introduction down here. It is my pleasure to bring this item before you. We have held a couple of work sessions with the city council as well as a couple of work sessions with the planning commission. Really appreciate the time tonight. I think it's made a lot of transition and changes that I think will hopefully make an improvement on our existing tree preservation ordinance. And without further ado, I would like to turn it over to our principal planner, or I'm sorry, our planning manager, Jeremy Lekirko, and our landscape architect, Peter Jensen. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Sarah. Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. I'm going to quickly pass this over. We're going to tag team a very quick presentation as a refresher for the council and for the community this evening. And so without further ado, let me pass it off to Peter to start off with the presentation.
Thank you, Jeremy. Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Want to go through a presentation real quickly. I think you've seen some of these slides before and we've talked about most of these things in previous work sessions. Of course, the Tree Protection Ordinance is a set of policies and guidelines to preserve and expand our current tree canopy. It was first adopted in the 1950s. It was updated in 1971 and 2002. And now we're getting back to again in 2025. So it's definitely steered the canopy and growth of trees in Hayward for quite a long time now. There's also a specific city strategic roadmap, fulfillment goal C11 that specifically calls for the update of the tree ordinances, why basically we're here doing this today. And of course, we want to align it with the Climate Action Plan that Hayward has. That's kind of the most important part of this and why the update is. Of course, we've had a lot of more sustainable environmental goals over the last few decades and we want to make sure that this ordinance aligns to those. We have had numerous work sessions before, two with the council, two with the planning commission. At our last planning commission, they voted 5-4 and then two absent to recommend the adoption of the updated ordinance to city council. Since our last meeting with you and the commission, from the comments that you have provided before, there's been some minor changes to it. Some clarified some of the intent, the process and the goal, including adding the wording of the urban forest into the overall intent of the ordinance itself. We've added a few definitions to there that were requested by both the commission and the council. We've added reference to our street tree list in the appendix, which is a separate document that provides some guidance of a tree selection, tree care, things of that nature. Revised and consolidated the heritage tree removal and appeals process. So we basically just have a, one appeals process for all types of trees, not just protected or heritage trees, having two different ones, which the council brought up last time. And they reorganized the ordinance for some clarity. So we've moved some things around in some sections just for clarification purposes. And with that, I'll hand it over to Jeremy.
Okay, so just to remind the council and community kind of why we're doing this. So it's not just about just kind of having a bunch of work sessions. It's really trying to update our ordinance to reflect best practices. The overarching highlights of the progress that we've made is really the intent to preserve native trees on private property. And that's probably one of the most significant changes that we're proposing with this ordinance update. As Peter mentioned, we're also adding a heritage tree definition because one of the things that we've heard through many community conversations is that some of our larger, more significant trees oftentimes go away and don't get replaced adequately. And so we've tried to be really thoughtful about requiring a slightly higher level of discretionary review when it comes to the removal of those kind of trees. We added an in-lu fee, which provides additional flexibility and opportunities for applicants and homeowners to mitigate loss of trees and maybe sites that maybe may not have enough space or maybe have competing interests with other development. And so we want to make sure that development is not going to be suffering for the lack of trees. So we offer that in-lu option. As we talked about, we're looking at creating that mitigation for development projects. We've changed how we assess our tree removal penalty. We, that's pretty much been more codified in our ordinance. We've changed the duration of the permit itself from one year. Reduced that down to three months because number one, that helps staff track these on a more frequent basis. And also allows those trees to be planted quicker, which means that they have an upward opportunity for success in a mature, in a faster fashion. And then we also, as was added, included in your staff report, we have included a guiding appendix as well as we've been updating our webpage. And really, we think that that appendix is really going to go a long way. We've just started, it's a draft form, but really helping to educate the community on what these new regulations would look like and not just do it in just a bunch of words, but also add pictures to it so that the community members can go out themselves and understand what trees are sensitive on their property and which ones are okay to remove. We did review this project against SEQA and we believe that it is categorically exempt from the SEQA guidelines for a couple of sections. And I would also just kind of point for the record and was circulated to the council and the mayor prior to the meeting. We did, since the staff report was published, we did receive several comments from members of the public. We did respond to many of those comments. Many of them came in over our city website. And so you won't see necessarily a lot of context to those comments. That many residents spoke in favor of the ordinance update. Others expressed some concerns about potential overreach and protection of trees in rear yards. And we thought, and we have responded to those comments and you should have that for the record. So with that, the other thing I would mention is that one of the other significant changes that we made is we changed the sliding scale for permit issuance and tree pruning fees. We used to have a one-size-fits-all approach, but that was not commensurate with the amount of staff time that was required to review and approve these. And so what we did is we created a more equitable approach for homeowners and for businesses. And so if you're proposing to remove fewer trees, you pay a less price, you pay a slightly reduced price. If you're proposing to take away a higher number of trees or a more significant tree, such as a heritage tree, that's going to be a deposit-based approach because that does require a little bit more hand-holding. It requires review of a technical harvest report and it also requires monitoring for those replacement species. So the annual pruning fee is still proposed to be the same at 817. But we think, again, these changes to the master fee schedule really provide a more equitable approach for the community and the residents at large. We do, with that, we'll wrap up the presentation. We do feel like the project is consistent and we would recommend that the city council approve the proposed text amendments to the municipal code, Chapter 10, Article 15, to update the city's tree preservation ordinance. We would also recommend approval of updates to the master fee schedule amendments as proposed by staff and also finding that the proposed amendments are in fact exempt from SEQA pursuant to guidelines 15307 and Section 15308. If adopted by council, we are planning a very robust outreach education campaign and that we've already done quite a lot leading up to this. But we will continue to do that because our job's not done. And we also really want to partner with a lot of our neighborhood community partners. We know that there's a lot of community nonprofit organization that have been doing some wonderful work for the city of Hayward and we want to continue that effort and partner with them to see this come to fruition. We would also propose that in the fall or in early 2026, we would like to come back to the city council to discuss how the council and the community would like us to utilize those in-lu fees, which, as we discussed before, could be utilized in a myriad of ways. So with that, that will conclude my, our presentation and we will open it up for questions. I would also say that we have our technical consultant from DUDAC online as well as our other staff landscape architect onboard in case there's any additional questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And before I go to public comment, I'll ask council if they have any questions, and some do. Councilmembers Armenio.
So questions first, right? Okay, so a couple of questions. Let's see, how are heritage trees identified? I'm looking at a tree, how am I going to know? That's a heritage tree.
We've set up a criteria basis for that to, for the community to understand exactly what a heritage tree is. So of course, most heritage trees are based upon age. But our protected trees already have a specific size that denote the age. So we're looking more at the native trees, if it's native to Hayward. If the tree itself provides some type of habitat, especially to endangered species, if it has some cultural significance, if it has a significance just to the city itself. So it has to check the box on these criteria to be labeled a heritage tree.
Are we thinking that there should be some kind of lettering on that tree? I've been to other countries where particular trees are stated, this tree, blah, 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 blah. So maybe that's something that you can consider. All right, let's see. There are fee exemptions. Is this fee exemption for low-income folks?
They're mostly tree fee exemptions for safety and hazard reasons. So if you, if the tree presents a public safety hazard for property or a life, of course, course, then they, we would waive basically the permit fee to remove the tree itself.
So if we have somebody who has very low income and they have a problem with a tree, we can reduce the fees?
One of the things that we have talked about, council members, we've talked about as part of the in lieu program, creating a part of that in lieu that would be afforded to low income and households to help maintain and remove trees that otherwise they couldn't afford. And so we are looking to maybe bring that discussion back to council as that's something that you would want to use a consultant for in order to waive certain fees. Right now, we don't have a program specifically based for low income residents, but it could be something that we discuss as part of the in lieu discussion.
Okay. And that was one of the two, the reasons why we have the sliding permit scale is to bring the cost down for residents who want to remove or prune their trees.
Is this program going to get us closer to finding out the number of total trees that we have in Hayward and Hayward's oldest tree or is not? Or am I going to not ever hear that?
The maintenance department now is actually embarking on doing what you're saying is quantifying all the trees basically in Hayward so we understand what we have out there. It does not specifically though recognize the oldest of the trees, but it does for the majority of the trees.
And we don't have anything that can help us identify the oldest tree?
We do and actually we have, I think the city's maintenance services division just recently acquired some softwares and the process of getting some software set up which will look at tree canopy. And with that, we can dive down to understand how large the canopy is and that will help us understand how old it potentially could be.
All right. Could you explain the relationship of this tree ordinance with the airport landscape? I don't, what's, what's, what's the, what's going on there?
That's a great question and thank you for asking that question. I think there's been a lot of confusion about the tree preservation ordinance and how it applies to the airport district itself. There are actually two separate processes. So we, as part of the, our hiring of DUDAC, which is our consultant team, one of the things that they did, of course, we talked about the tree canopy. The other thing that they did is to help the airport update the plant list. So when we have projects that are coming in and around the airport, we are recommending to developers and to homeowners the appropriate tree species that could survive long term. Many trees that are there currently are growing to a height that would present unsafe situations for aviation and they're on violation of FAA rules. And so in collaboration with the airport, we created an exemption language in there that in the effect, you have a tree that is potentially growing up higher and is puncturing that invisible kind of layer, that height layer, then that would be an allowance that an applicant could get that tree removed without having to pay for the permit fee.
Remove or crop back?
Either, either. So the exemption and the language and the ordinance applies to tree removals or exemption would apply to tree pruning.
Oh yeah. But there is a possibility that the tree could not be killed.
That is correct.
All right, okay.
That is correct.
Okay, got it. All right, let's see. Are we thinking at all about looking for spaces for planting fruit trees in Hayward?
Another good question. We, many of the, in terms of looking for spaces specifically for fruit trees, no. We haven't, we haven't embarked on that. But as part of the next phase, I think that has been identified in the general plan is working on an urban forestry management plan. And that's going to more regulate and we'll be talking about certain canopy goals that we have for different neighborhoods throughout our community, including some of those underserved neighborhoods right now. Not every tree is, needs to be a native tree. Not every tree needs to have a large canopy. A lot of those fruit trees are allowed and you can go ahead and plant them right now. And because those trees are not considered protected or native trees, they would not, you would not necessarily have a problem if you wanted to remove that, assuming that it's like in the rear yard or something like that.
Okay. Good questions and thank you for the report.
Thank you.
Good answers. I'm sorry, good answers, not good questions.
Thank you. Council member Syrah.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the report. I know a lot of work has gone into this. Just a few more questions. I think there was a really good comment around someone who was concerned about, you know, homeowners taking the responsibility amongst themselves to reduce wildfire risk and harden their homes and being afraid of being penalized by a fee for trying to make their homes less likely to catch on fire during a wildfire, for example. They might also get hit with higher insurance bills because of trees on their property. And I don't know if we've, in this current version, have made exemptions for that, but could you just clarify that for the public?
Yeah, so we do have, we do have an exemption currently listed in there for areas that have been identified in high or very high fire severity zones, which of course encompass a large part of the hilly area of Hayward. If you happen to live in that area and you've been identified by the CAL FIRE map, which of course is still in a draft form, but once that gets codified, we plan to upload that, those GIS layers to our GIS site so that homeowners can see for themselves. The other thing that we're doing, and so to answer your question, if you're a homeowner that lives up there and you want to remove that proactively because it poses a potential fire risk, you can do that without having to pay that permit fee and there's not a problem with that. The other thing that we're going to be working on after this ordinance gets adopted is creating, there's a couple of, a couple of things that we're going to be partnering with the fire department on. Number one is creating the zone zero space, which is in response to some of the state legislation about creating absolute buffers around homes. And this is a recently adopted state law, which the city is going to be mandated to enforce. But the other thing that we're doing is we're creating some defensible space guidelines, which is going to be some general handouts. So whether you live in the hills or whether you live in the flat land area, this is going to be just a general guideline that homeowners can look at and review so that they themselves can take accountability, responsibility for making that clear pathway or passageway so that they're not inadvertently creating a vegetation wildfire risk onto their home. And that changes, you know, that requires a little bit of education because I think as all of us know, for years, we're so used and accustomed to doing a lot of planting around our home and inadvertently that has created increased potential for fire risk. And so we are going to be creating those guidelines. It's not specifically tied to this ordinance, but it'll be additional handout and the regulation related to the vision zero will be an ordinance that the fire and development services will be working on together.
Great. And then just as a follow up to that, I appreciate your clarification about the high and very high zones. I remember seeing those draft maps recently and I'm wondering, do we reach the very high or are we moderately high and high? And I guess my question is, would it be worthwhile for us to make room to add an additional tier here as an amendment to just make sure we're encompassing all Hayward residents that are experiencing living in those fire zones? Because I know that some of the moderately high areas, folks are already starting to lose their fire insurance policies, which to me is a big red flag that I think we don't want to discourage them from being able to harden their homes as a result of.
The one thing that I would just, I would just add to the exemption language and that's a good, a good point. I mean, certainly that would be under council's purview if they wanted to make any modifications. But one of the things I did want to clarify is we did add exception language in there that if the fire marshal makes a determination that there's a potential life safety risk or a potential risk, that they also would have the ability to remove those trees. So we did create some flexibility even in the exemption language. But we really wanted to be on a case by case basis and we want the city to still have some ability to review those requests to make sure that we're just not obliterating our tree canopy citywide.
Yeah, and maybe rather than, you know, sending the fire marshal into these different situations or asking folks to engage with city staff, maybe something that could suffice is if somebody loses their insurance, being able to submit that to the city for exemption as a way of streamlining that process. But I just want to make sure that the categories we're setting up don't unnecessarily exclude folks that, you know, these insurance companies with their billions of dollars and great machine learning technology are identifying as fire risk zones. We are punishing our residents for trying to make sure that they can keep their homes safe and prevent our neighborhoods from catching fire. So I don't know necessarily what that amendment might look like. Maybe this can be a revision to this ordinance because I know this has been baking for a long time. But I just want us to really think about how many homeowners fall into that category that live in, the categories we have currently and how to make sure we're not excluding anybody or making a streamlined process for them to be included in the exemption process.
Yeah, and I think that's a good point. I think when we have more information and we start developing that, that vision zero policy and trying to understand who it actually pertains to and how it would be implemented. I mean, that's the enforcement again is another kind of provision. We don't know, I haven't dove into the CAL FIRE maps to find out how many actual properties are impacted. I know the maps are out there, but because it's not overlaid to our GIS layer, it's really complicated to see how many actual physical properties are impacted. So I definitely think that's going to be part of the conversation moving forward. And certainly if we need to revisit that in the future, I think we could certainly do that.
Yeah, okay, thank you. I appreciate you taking the feedback. And that's where I think if they just submit their loss of insurance coverage, that will help us understand areas that might not be covered by a map that doesn't get updated very frequently compared to more private models. Second question is, I appreciate seeing the appendix of, you know, the airport planting guidelines. I know we said that we wanted to base them around FAA requirements, although I do know in past conversations, there have been FAA recommendations. And so as I'm looking at the appendix in this draft, I'm seeing that the zone B, which is supposed to have runway object free zone, which is very different than having plants of a certain height, extend well into the middle of the SkyWest golf course. It makes me feel a little bit concerned and I can understand why folks are concerned. I'm seeing a interpretation of what, either the requirements or the recommendations by staff, but I'm not seeing the actual requirements overlaid here. And I think this obfuscation, not to say this is your fault by any means, but this is what is causing the community to lose trust in this process is it feels like the requirements versus recommendation distinction is being obfuscated and these kinds of recommendations are being put in the back of an appendix without making that clear connection. So I'm hoping you can clarify this a bit more.
The FAA flight zones in the planting palette, that's all governed by the airport safety land use map and I think we have our airport manager, I think he's available, should be available online to answer questions. The airport safety zones are established by the FAA and that really is based on the planes and their altitude. And there's a, there's an FAA law that basically restricts certain obstructions into that. Some obstructions could be from a construction crane, adding an AC unit on top of a commercial building. And other obstructions could be that a tree grew beyond the height limit that would safely allow for an airport to land. Those flight paths and those flight zones extend beyond the actual airport boundaries. And it is again, anticipating the trajectory. The guidelines for the airport planting, to be clear, that's not regulatory from the city's perspective. We're not regulating what can and can't be planted. Those are FAA guidelines on things that they're recommending that would deter potential wildlife attractions. And so what we've done is we've worked in collaboration with airport staff who also consulted with FAA and we worked with our consultant team, DUDAC, who've also created airport planting plans for other airports in Northern California and looked at what are the best practices in terms of what, what kind of planting can occur in each of these zones. And obviously that's going to, that's going to translate to what kind of wildlife attractors those could be and what is the actual maturity height of those trees after they've continued, after they continue to grow.
Okay, and so for everything in zone F, which is the large purple circle around the airport in the appendix, I'm trying to understand the terminology where it says more than 100 feet between aerial surface and ground. Are we talking about trees being able to grow larger than 100 feet there?
I would think so, yes. I'm going to have to defer to our airport staff.
Mr. McNeely.
Mayor, council members, good evening.
Yeah.
So can, can we restate the question because this is very complicated stuff and I want to make sure I give you a good answer?
So thanks for being here, Doug. When I'm looking at the draft appendix and I'm seeing this large purple circle for zone F that says more than 100 feet between aerial surface and ground, can you help me understand what that means in terms of heights of trees allowed in that purple area?
Well, the purple areas, I recall, and I apologize, I don't have that map in front of me, but the purple area is approximately 10,000 feet, a radius of 10,000 feet around the airport. So that's the airport influence area. The part that we're more concerned about and that we have focused on are the colors and the zones that are closer to the runways, as you see there. So for example, the areas off the runways, the immediate ends where the airplanes are coming down to make a landing are the most restrictive. In addition to that, on the ground itself, there's something called the RPZ or runway protection zone. And those are put there for a purpose and that is in the event that an airplane landing or taking off needs to come back down and maybe goes off the end of the runway, that there's a safe distance for them to slide and come to a stop. That's the RPZ. So that's one, one reason why you mentioned SkyWest and, you know, the fact is that we need an RPZ there according to FAA standards. The rest of it with the trees and plantings, we've worked closely with staff at city hall to come up with some planning so that we get trees that only grow to a certain height where it's necessary to restrict those.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. And I know that part of the policies are replacement of two trees for any trees that are taken down. Even if the price is exempted, is there still a requirement for the planting of trees in this case?
It would be, but they don't have to necessarily plant them on site and that in lieu option is also afforded to single family homeowners as well.
Okay, understood. And then just my last question, Doug, is I understand that this is, I'm just trying to clarify the distinction between the FAA requirement and FAA recommendation. I know we need an RPZ, but how far that extends is I think what I'm, what I'm wondering about as it relates to encroaching on the SkyWest golf course.
Well, thank you for asking that question because this comes up from time to time. And I think part of the problem is that much of the FAA guidance that we have is in the form of what they call an advisory circular. This kind of suggests to some people that this is discretionary on the part of the city, that we may comply or not. But actually I'm looking at an FAA document, it's Airport Land Use Compatibility Planning. It's an advisory circular and paragraph 1.1.1 states that airports that accept federal money through the airport improvement program, as we do here, must comply with all FAA grant assurances. So the term assurances is a little misleading. We do not have discretion that we have to comply with all of those. So the grant assurances, not to go on with this, but just to give you a fair idea, the grant assurances, it's a contract that we sign every time that we go and get FAA grant funding for a capital project. And for example, grant assurance number 20 hazardous removal and mitigation, I quote, it being the airport, "It will take appropriate action to assure that such terminal airspace as required to protect instrument and visual operations to the airport, including establish minimal flight altitudes, will be adequately cleared and protected by removing, lowering, relocating, marking or lighting or otherwise mitigating existing airport hazards and by preventing the establishment or creation of future airport hazards." So this applies to any structure. It could be an antenna, a building or a tree.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification. I'm taking a look at the map right now. It seems like the larger majority of trees are not in the RPZ that you've identified. So I appreciate you taking the time to share that distinction. Those are my questions for now. Thank you for your patience with me, colleagues.
Thank you. Mayor Proton Roach.
Thank you and thank you to my colleagues for their questions because you checked off a lot of mine. But, and thank you, we have looked at this now a few times and I appreciate you sort of working with everyone and adjusting it as we went along. I wanted to, if you wouldn't mind, there was the one caller that mentioned, you know, that this is just sort of designed to help developers move mature trees and plant smaller ones somewhere else. And I know when we got into this, it was to increase our tree canopy, maintain our tree canopy. And so can you just speak to, like, if a developer is going to be cutting down a mature tree on a development property, you know, what is our goal there so that, I just want to answer that question, right, that this is some way to sort of allow us to remove mature trees?
That's a really great question and that happens quite frequently in planning. We see a lot of opportunity for development to come forward. Obviously, there's a lot of competing interests at stake here. You have developers and you have the state, which mandates if projects meet certain, like for example, in a housing project, the city really doesn't have a lot of choice but to approve it. And with density bonus, which are a lot of the applications that we receive now, developers can waive any sort of development standard or requirement. And so what we're trying to do is we're trying to provide a developer additional flexibility that if their goal is to truly maximize the development on site and they don't have enough room, and not every parcel is going to be able to accommodate it. We don't want someone to put in, we don't want a developer to install a tree just for the sake of meeting an ordinance requirement if the space that they're installing it is not going to be suitable for long-term growth. So what we would rather do is we would rather have that money be set aside and us really concentrate on identifying locations throughout our community and those are, could be in underserved neighborhoods that really do support long-term growth. That's really the overarching goal. That was the goal of this. And so, you know, you will have some developers that will opt to do the in lieu fee, but the purpose of that in lieu fee then is to then spread that canopy in other areas of the community where maybe the development isn't happening, where we are using that money out of the general fund or other coffers to pay for street trees. This could be an opportunity to help fund some of those underserved areas of our community while still having the canopy in the long run and providing the developer that flexibility. We do, as part of our ordinance, we have added certain goals and objectives. And so our first preference always will be that if you can mitigate on site, we want you to mitigate on site. In some cases, a lot of these large mature trees that are coming out are heritage trees. They're worth a lot of money and there's no number of trees that could be substituted. And so what we've done in those instances is we've added that higher level of review that have basically said that if you have a development project that is going to the planning commission or the city council and they want to remove a heritage tree, there would be additional findings that would be necessary to be met or at least to be, to be considered. And ultimately, it would be up to the decision-making body to determine whether or not the benefit of removing that tray out, of removing that tree outweighs the benefit of the project before the commissioner, the council. So again, the purpose is not to incentivize people to not mitigate. They're still going to be on the hook to mitigate. The intent was to incentivize that if, is to provide additional options for how they can mitigate.
All right, thank you. Yeah, because I mean, I can understand the point that, you know, if you take out a mature tree, like it's going to be years, decades. I mean, I don't know, generations before you return that level of canopy that that mature tree is taking out. So I can understand that, I mean, that that is a real concern, but I, you're right, we do have competing interests. We have to approve some of these developments and that might include taking out a tree, which, you know, I think we all are very sad about, including council members, when a tree has to be removed. All right, thanks. And I just, the last piece I wanted to follow up on SkyWest because I hear the angst about it, you know, there is, you know, we haven't decided what's going to happen there yet and there are a lot of trees. And I'm guessing the large concern are those, that large bank of eucalyptus trees. Does that fall within this zone?
Well, I would just say that that project, if and when it comes to fruition, will be subject to all the standard environmental reviews. And so they will be following our standard ordinance guidelines. They will be looking at our tree preservation ordinance. We will be making a determination. They will also, if there's, and we've heard tonight, but we've also known that there are some endangered species that are currently living out there. And so that is going to have to be something that's going to be studied. And ultimately, it's going to be likely the council that is going to be able to make those decisions. But until we have all the information on opportunities to mitigate it, it's quite possible that some of those trees are not in good health, but it's quite possible that they are healthy and that could be an opportunity for a developer to actually build around it. So again, it's going to be an ongoing conversation, but ultimately, when that environmental analysis is done and that report comes before the council, it'll be up to the council to make that determination.
Great. So this ordinance does not give airport free rein to start cutting down the eucalyptus trees?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Bonilla.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank council member Syrah because he asked a whole bunch of great questions and I think council member Roach just clarified mine. I just wanted to get really clear on what the impact would be to SkyWest golf course if this is approved tonight. And basically, there is not going to be any impact to SkyWest golf course. It's if there's a development, then the development will have to meet these standards in addition to- to everything else they're going to have to meet, and then if they're affordable, there's entire, I mean, it's like all of that, right? So this tonight isn't, like Councilmember Roach said, going to, you know, have some sort of tree removal project begin in the next, you know, couple of months at Sky West?
You are absolutely correct. This does not give license for any developer, whether it's Sky West or anyplace else in the city, to take out trees without review, without having to follow the ordinance, and without having to mitigate the loss of those trees. And in some cases, when they're large trees, it will go to the highest approving body to make that determination.
Got it. And then kind of the general concerns, and we're talking about trees, but they were talking about trees and wildlife and all of that, so I mean, that will have to go through the whole CEQA analysis and have to be mitigated, I mean, so we're, you know, years away from that potentially happening.
That is absolutely correct, and they're shifting environmental regulations, so there may be other considerations that we will want to consider at that point.
Excellent. Thank you so much. You always answer all of these questions so clearly. And then my last point is just agreeing with Councilmember Syrup, you know, being clear on sort of what the FAA is requiring in terms of sort of that airport overlay and all of that stuff versus what we're requiring and where we have discretion, I think will be important, because, you know, you don't want us to think that we have discretion of something and then we're like, well, we're coming in and chopping all these things down because it's FAA required, but there's confusion, is it a requirement, or is it an advisor, or whatever the term is? So I just want to make sure that there's, you know, an abundance of clarity around that.
Thank you for raising that, and I thank Councilmember Syrup for bringing this up. This was one of the comments that we actually adjusted our approach after the last work session. I think you raised that question last time, there was some uncertainty around the FAA, and I think at that time, we were truly trying to marry the tree removal process with the Airport Land Use Compatibility Plan, which is a city plan. And we realized that that's probably not the best approach, because this is not a city regulation, this is an FAA regulation, and so as long as we're following the FAA guidelines, which already exist, so whether we adopt the ordinance or not, it's there and we have to follow it. But providing that clarity and the ordinance, I think, was super helpful. I would also say, too, that that's going to be some additional work that we can do with our appendix. The appendix that everyone is referring to is not adopted as part of the ordinance, it's not a regulatory tool, it's a guideline. And so if we need to go back and we need to make those updates, or we need to change the plant palette, or we need to add some additional clarity, we have the ability to do that without coming back before the Council, and we can do that administratively.
Excellent. And then my last comment is just going to be, you know, I know that there's an extensive public outreach process that, you know, is lined up. I just want to underscore how important that's going to be, especially because we heard some of the confusion out there in the community already, so making sure that we're out here talking to people and addressing their concerns so that they understand what we're trying to do here, I think, is really important. So thank you so much for addressing these questions and for your presentation this evening, and more importantly, for leading this great work.
Councilmember Andrews.
Thank you, and thank you to staff and Mr. Lucurico on all of the questions we receive and responding prior to the meeting. I know that was a lot of work, so thank you so much for that. I'll be very brief. I wanted to know if the Basca, I know they are doing plant landscaping classes, and I know that it's mainly focused on plants, but would there be an opportunity also for people to get more information on this ordinance, more education at those classes?
I hope so.
Okay.
We, and that is something that I've talked about with our wonderful landscape architect professionals that we have on staff, is that they're really interested and anxious and are willing to go out and have those one-on-one conversations with different neighborhood groups and community organizations, because it is true that a lot of times, people put something in the ground not realizing that it's going to be a problem. I don't think anyone intentionally plants a tree to end up with a broken foundation. So I think education is going to go a long way. Until we had fully staffed, we haven't had that opportunity, so I think now we have a great opportunity with this new ordinance adoption and with tools that maybe we didn't think about before. There's a lot of great resources out there that already exist, there's a lot of other jurisdictions that are doing remarkable outreach, and they do it through the web, and they create very intuitive ways for people to navigate and get that information, but I think whether we partner with the library and try to have some sort of training class, or we partner with local nurseries in helping to educate, that's all part of the equation.
Okay, yes, so again, Bay Area Water Supply Conservation Agency has landscaping classes, so I would encourage the staff to do that, and also, would you also look at opportunities with the Cleaning Green Commission on education as well? I know that a lot of them already knew about this ordinance coming up, but just wanted to make sure if that was something on your radar.
We will definitely need to partner, and our Maintenance Services Director, Rollman, is gone, but I got to give a shout out to him and his team for really being very instrumental in helping us kind of craft this ordinance, this, you know, even though it's being led by DSD Planning, as you heard from Doug, this is a collaborative effort in partnership between the airport and Maintenance Services, and it's not going to stop, we're going to continue to work with our community organizers to help get out the word and to help educate, 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 so absolutely.
Yes, and then I know a few of my colleagues already mentioned CEQA and having a mitigated negative declaration addressing any findings from CEQA, but there's also an opportunity for public comment as well for those types of processes. Can you just explain to the public that that is also not just a document that we create, this is actually a community engagement tool in order for us looking at potential work that will happen if we were to do anything at Sky West or other projects?
Yeah, so for large projects, we can use Sky West, or we can use other ones that don't, that are required to do an EIR. We are required by CEQA law, by the state law, to do outreach and scoping meetings with members of the public, and so that would be something that we would want to gain feedback from the community as that process begins, but it's a continual process until the project is actually, is fully entitled, that environmental review work, and anyone has the, would have the ability, when those analysis and those reports are done, to submit comments, and per the city's requirements, we're required to respond to those comments. So it will be all in the record, and usually, we have outside professionals that do that, those CEQA documents or EIRs are pretty large.
Okay, and then lastly, I know there was mention of insurance, and wanted to know if this is something that the Public Safety Committee can also look at in terms of insurance and fire, new fire maps that are coming out, that we also compare that with the new Tree Preservation Ordinance, and how we can also do advocacy with our Insurance Commissioner as it relates to them making sure that these trees are being managed effectively near their homes.
Yeah, I definitely think that is part of, that's going to be a good dialogue for the defensible space guidelines, and it's also going to be something we're going to have to really contemplate with the Zone Zero. Obviously, there's the state law that mandates that we have to do this, but there could be just best practices that we would go over and above state law that would allow homeowners additional flexibility, and so these are going to be discussions that we'll be bringing forward to the Council, probably sometime in 2026.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, no more questions from Council. I'll move on to public comment, and first public commenter is Peggy Gurnsey.
Hi, it's Peggy Gurnsey. I agree with the mayor very much about wanting trees in our tree canopy in our city. I see a lot of what's going on as, there've been a lot of mistakes done in Hayward by developers and the City Council and whatever. You planted Mexican palm trees in Palmasia, you tore them all down, now all those homes don't have trees. Peterman in Southgate and that entire area had fruitless mulberry trees. Now Peterman used to have a canopy, like B Street, full of trees, and those huge trees disappeared. So did all the homeowners get to pull them out? I see a lot of this going on as it's a money grab by the city for us to pay for your mistakes and problems. You guys get to decide if it's a heritage tree, a protected tree, all this other good stuff, and I have to pay for it. You guys, and I have traced it back, but I can't, I don't have the written proof, because three of my previous neighbors talked to the city about removing or cutting a redwood tree that is on the easement between two properties, and the city said no. And guess what? A windstorm took a branch off that, dumped it into my roof, no insurance paid for it because the other guy didn't pay for it. The city said, I couldn't prove that you guys said that, no, he couldn't take down a heritage protected tree, so I came up with $20,000 for a new roof. That's not fair. That's not fair at all, because I don't have $20,000. You plant a Chinese, what I was told is called a Chinese flame on Berry, that drops this horrible dust pollen all over the street, and myself, I've never had asthma problems, but since those trees have been growing bigger and taller, myself and my medical care assistant have had asthma problems about it. You planted trees on Mission and Berry down on the sidewalk that drop these little twigs all over, they get on the wheels of my walker, so I can't walk, trying to walk up to get my nails done, I have to go around or whatever. So you don't care, I'm, I take, I'm sorry, it's not that you don't care, you don't pay attention, but I'm say, I'm suffering the consequences of it. Apricot Court got built off Gatting Road, and there was a huge heritage apricot orchard that I used to get apricots from, so I know those trees have been there, and I've been in Hayward over 53 years. You got planning, or whoever decided to let them build it, tore out all the trees. How many acres of trees got replanted for those? Nope. So, you know, there's a fruitless cherry plum that the city planted on properties.
Ms. Gurnsey?
Yes, I've reached my time, but I'm going to say this, you planted the trees on properties and you used to maintain those trees, and then it used to be every year, and then it was every two years, then it was every three, and now every five years, and they've now told my friend, if you can, you ask us and we'll try and fit you in the schedule.
Ms. Gurnsey?
They were owned by the city.
Thank you.
You know?
Our next speaker.
It's not fair. Pay attention and don't, please do it with more care and understanding.
Thank you.
And come up with $20,000 for me, or at least 10.
Thank you.
You got a raise, I didn't.
Next speaker is Sandra Frost. Sandra Frost.
Good evening again. So I appreciate the fact that the city is considering this Tree Preservation Ordinance and is putting so much work into this, but it, so much of it seems backwards to me that there's not been a tree inventory done that's really grounded in what's here. There's no clear picture of the tree, the tree presence within the city of Hayward because there has not been an inventory. I had experience with the city of Fremont where they have an urban forestry department that is magnificent, educating the public about proper trees, proper care of trees. Hayward doesn't have any kind of occupational program for arboriculture, so all of this is dead end, and it's backwards, and out of all respect, I disagree with you, Councilwoman Bonilla, we are not confused, we are not confused about this at all. And the inroads that the airport expansion is going to make into Sky West is horrifying, and I can't even express it to you. As I said in my email, Save the Bay did an excellent speaker's presentation at the library this past weekend, and they were not aware of this open space at Sky West that borders on the marshland, that has protected trees, that has mature tree species, and it's in a floodplain. And you guys want to expand the airport runway into this floodplain and talk about cutting down the trees and keeping the trees at a certain height, so there's, there's no, you know, there's a safety for the plains, but what about the people who are living in that neighborhood? You know, I can't even express this to you, and I probably need to stop because I'm really tired and I'm really upset, but this is a little backwards, and as much as I want to see the canopy protected and expanded, and I have to speak about this, I have 39 seconds to talk about the CEQA failure at Ruby Meadow that was actually part of the county, but it was borderline with Hayward, and they had the most beautiful mature trees there, and it was habitat for wildlife species, and they put in this god-awful building that's affordable housing for people who don't even live here, and I don't want to see that happen again. I, we can't let that happen again, so thank you, thank you for listening.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Randy Woggi.
Anyway, I am in agreement with George, Ray, and Julie. I feel like, you know, I'm a little worried about Sky West. We had eight or 10 people, kids, teenagers, come in here and say that they would like to see that be open space, and when you look at this amendment, it actually says the FAA, I understand they could require the height requirement, but does the FAA require all of these specific plants that is in there? Like, you know, the eucalyptus tree isn't even mentioned in there, I know it's a non-native species, so what would happen if East Bay Parks came in and said, hey, we want to make this a park? So now, does that mean that all of these trees, you know, everything that's in there, would it, you'd have to put in these, you know, the required plants that are stated in that amendment? It just seems like a real overreach by the Hayward Airport. I mean, I've seen HOA lists that aren't this big, you know, it's crazy to me a little bit. So I would just say, hey, this is a great ordinance, I love all the work that you've done, but I think that the airport one is a bit of an overreach. Like, why are all the plants required like that? Specific plants? That's kind of wild to me. I mean, sure, you can recommend, but you, in the wording, it's saying "require," so I would think any development, even a park, would have to put in just these plants, just these trees, and imagine how cost prohibitive that would be. I understand that, you know, oh yeah, you know, maybe we'll have this, I forgot what it was, we'll look at the eucalyptus trees, but when you have it in words like this, I just think you should do the ordinance, but really rethink the airport thing, because I think that somehow that group has just overdone it. That is, I mean, when I was looking through the ordinance, I didn't see anything else that was so cra, I'm not crazily, but so comprehensive. Anyway, thank you for your time, and we really do want to see a park there. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next public comment is Tyler Dragone.
Thank you, councilmembers. I agree with Randy, I agree with Sandy. You know, CEQA is essentially a waiting game, and, you know, if you respond to CEQA in a deliberate way, you can, you could overcome CEQA. What we are asking you to do is listen to the people of Hayward that were before you today and say, we want those trees protected. I'm just a little confused because, so is the, is the airport currently out of FAA compliance with the requirements, not the recommendations, but with the requirements? And what does that mean if you're already receiving federal funds? I mean, does the airport have a timeline that it wants to seek compliance? Is it like preparing to apply for a grant that they think will be denied because they're not in compliance? So there's just a little, there's more gray than there is clarification, and, you know, overall, the appendix is really sloppy, maybe it's just, it could use a little bit more explanation, because, you know, when you, when you read something that says like an object-free zone, I mean, you're thinking it's object-free, which means there are no objects in that zone. So why does it extend not only into Sky West and covering, you know, the once Pro Shop, but it also extends into Hisbarian Boulevard and like into like the public right-of-way and includes that, you know? And includes that, you know, Wenton Hisbarian intersection? So that was, it's just kind of confusing. And I think it's good that it's a draft. But that, I think that whole map and that whole sort of explanation of what the map is needs to be clarified. And then as far as, you know, the ordinance, I really support the ordinance. I think this is a good step forward. So thank you for doing this. And thank you for allowing your staff to do this. Does, and this might be a dumb question, but does the city need to follow its own ordinance? And I say that because, you know, the city with like parcel eight, it owns a lot of property. You know, it has taken trees down on the former 238 Caltrans. I mean, the city does plant trees. But it would be, it would nice, it would be nice to know if like any of those counted as heritage trees? If those were, you know, put in some, put on some sort of list to then, you know, be replanted or mitigated for? I mean, so does the city need to follow its own ordinance in the whole mitigation and remediation? If on city property, you know, there are trees that the city wants to cut down? And, you know, Sky West is city property. So does it need to follow the ordinance on city property? I know it gets complicated because what's the city going to do? Find itself to then, you know? So anyways, that's, that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next caller is Stella.
Hi there. This is actually Mimi. So I just want to say that I know that you guys already got my comments because I emailed them in today. And I just got home from my Oro Loma meeting. So I'm really grateful that this meeting is still going on. I'm happy to hear about like, you know, wanting to save heritage trees and doing all this other great stuff. But like I said in my comments, you know, I just, and I'm reading the comments that Jeremy sent back to me right now. And some of the things are a little bit concerning to me. You know, like I spoke about in lieu fees. And I'm not a big fan of them because I feel like, I get it that sometimes we have to mitigate things elsewhere. And I totally understand that. But I just want to make sure that the H Street corridor gets the mitigation that they deserve for anything that might happen in that corridor. I feel like we both know, we all know that this is a very disadvantaged community. In, you know, according to the Cal EnviroStream presentation you guys had about a year ago. You know, I just, you know how I feel about Sky West? I feel like once we take, start taking trees out, once we start paving over things, once we start letting land use decisions be made that aren't in the best interest of the community, it just seems like the wrong way for us to move. And it seems like it's the total antithesis to, you know, all the plans that Hayward has is, you know, as far as like the climate, you know, and the environmental justice element, the sustainability plan and, and all that kind of stuff. So I know Hayward wants to be the best city it can be. And I am a complete supporter of Hayward and I love Hayward. And I just really want us to really listen to the community. You know, one of the, I think he was a consultant tonight was speaking about this, about listening to the community. But, you know, I remember when we had the Sky West outreach during COVID, like four or five years ago. And almost every single person that put in comments for that outreach said to save Sky West as open space. But it's not being looked at as open space. It's being looked at as other things. And it's being looked at for, you know, taking down trees that might provide habitat for all kinds of things. You know, we had, we had a bald eagle sighting in Sky West the other day. So I just want to say, I really hope that we can come to some great agreement where Sky West gets saved as open space. And I thank you so much for listening to me. And I hope you're having a great night. Good night.
Thank you. So I will close public comment and come back to the dais and Councilmember Cyrop.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the public comments. Again, thank you for the work that went into this ordinance. I think what's important about this is there are developments happening throughout the city. And we need a preservation ordinance in place to make sure that we're either incentivizing or disincentivizing how our trees are treated, which ones are taken out, encouraging folks to keep one. So it's better to have this than to not have this. I think the comments I want to share around Sky West specifically is, you know, the concern that I feel personally, I don't want to speak for anybody else, but that I think is felt by some of the community is, these are really complex ordinances. And even us as council members aren't the full experts. We're really trusting staff here. And so if we sign off on this and then we're seeing massive changes to the makeup of some, like Sky West, for example, it's going to feel like a betrayal of community trust. And it'll feel like a betrayal of trust for me as a council member, just to be completely explicit. I think we're hearing very clear community calls. I know there was a plan for developing Sky West in the past. Those plans changed. A lot of those plans were developed with a prior council. The majority of council members are new. And maybe we signed off on it when we knew less. Before, there were almost 2,000 people saying, please save this. And, you know, when you think about something as simple as, I don't know, like Dr. Seuss's Lorax, right? And the villain is the corporation that's trying to burn down all the trees to generate profit. I mean, like, let's not be Dr. Seuss villains here, okay? I know it sounds elementary, but paving over Golden Gate Park or Central Park would be unthinkable for San Francisco or New York. I'm really asking for staff to be sensitive here to our community's needs. I, based off the answers I'm hearing from staff, think this is a good faith effort to improve our tree preservation across the city. I think as we're talking about plans for development of Sky West, one of those plans should be, how do we preserve it as open space? And I know at our most recent strategic planning session, that was one of the top vote getters is we as a city are exploring how to preserve it as open space. So I want the community to hear that and know that that is an option on the table, which might involve trying to find the right partner so that that cost isn't unfairly held by our airport. So that might be a topic for a later day. But I just, I really want to emphasize to staff because I am in support of this ordinance and will be supporting it tonight. Please don't take advantage of the community's trust here. Even if an ordinance technically allows for something, understanding that this is sensitive to the residents in this area, especially a lower income neighborhood that suffers from a lot of environmental injustice. Let's not take advantage just because an ordinance might to the letter of the law allow it. So I hope the folks online hear that, that are listening, that are staff, especially at the airport from Public Works. And I really thank you for the work that's put into here. But let's, you know, let's move as partners in collaboration with our, with our residents and our constituents. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmembers Zermeño.
Mayor, thank you. And thanks again for the good report. A couple of comments. Let's see, I like it as a tree. However, myself, that's a good idea. I am leery a little bit about the inclusion of the airport because I see it perhaps as a way to kill all those trees around the airport. So I'm not pleased with that particular notion or suspicion that I have. I see no relationship. Update the landscape design guidelines for projects near the Hayward Executive Airport. To me, it has nothing to do with preserving our heritage trees, identifying our heritage trees. And we do have markers. When somebody passes away, we have a lot of markers. So maybe that's something that we could consider for a heritage tree or native tree that's something else. But a heritage tree, if I look at a tree, I don't know which one is a heritage. I would love for you to explore that. Let's see, tree permits is a good idea, good fees. Protection of nesting trees, that's very, very important. Permit reduction is an excellent idea. In lieu option, what do we do with the in lieu fees? Well, then plant more trees with that money. That's my preference. Let's see. And then we have community partners. That's also something very good that we can do. I still want, want us to look for the oldest tree. Let's see. The exemption for low C. We keep killing some of our trees. Three trees that I remember being killed by the city was one of Soto Road because it kept causing accidents. Can you imagine the tree causing accidents? And there was a beautiful, huge tree on A Street near Grand also that was felled a little while ago. And there was another gorgeous redwood tree over by the senior homes that were approved by Grand and B. So it's lots of these trees. And that's something that, that's not impressive. Doesn't impress me at all whatsoever. So thank you for mentioning that there will be an educational program on this. The appendix with all the trees, et cetera. I made copies of those. And again, I don't feel that any tree near the airport should give up its life when all you have to do is cut off the top. Give it a haircut. But I think that including this language, it's kind of giving this, giving the city permit to just simply cut them down. And I'm leery of that. I support the ordinance 100%. And I wish I could divorce or take away any language of reference to the airport. But I don't think that my colleagues would go with that.
Just, yeah, just to clarify, that FAA rule that we added into the ordinance, which I think you're reading, that currently exists. So that's existing federal law. The problem is, is that many residents aren't aware of it. And so we wanted to be clear on what those FAA requirements are. We're, we're not interested in going out and allowing neighbors to just randomly chop down their tree if those trees can be pruned back to a healthy level. The problem has been, historically though, we haven't had a lot of screening or a lot of guidance that's been created for homeowners. And so they will go to a nursery and they'll plant something that will grow to be 150 feet tall. And that creates a problem. Or, or it could be a volunteer, bird droppings. All of a sudden, something comes out of the ground. They think it's beautiful, not realizing that it could, down the road, create a safety issue. And so the whole purpose of creating these, these details that have the appendix is to help educate. So that homeowner, if they're installing that tree today, it's still here 30 years from now.
Yeah, no, I believe, I'm certainly, I love this. I love what you all did. That's tremendous. It's just I'm leery of that airport. And even though I'm leery of it, I would like to move on the item, Mayor. And thank you. And thanks again.
Okay, thank you. Moved by Councilmember Zermeño. I don't know if there's a second.
A second.
Seconded by Mayor Protem Roach. And next is Mayor Protem Roach.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, I'll be, I will be supporting the ordinance. And I really appreciate all the work you've done. You know, my motivation here, and I think all of our motivation here was to create more protection for our canopy in the city, not less. And I, and I think some of the problems that were mentioned by the community was because we didn't have these protections. So trees weren't able to be removed. And neighbors, you know, I know when I was campaigning, a lot of people said they, you know, I said, oh my God, you really need more trees in this neighborhood? And they said, no, 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 we don't want them here. They're messy. And so there is a lot of, there are a lot of people that are purposely taking out trees that have gotten away with taking out large trees and, and didn't face any penalty. So the motivation here to me and passing this ordinance far outweighs some of the concerns we've heard, which I hope will be, you know, mitigated by the appeals process and, and by understanding the difference between FAA and, and the city. And I don't think there's any boogeyman here on, on some like, you know, surreptitious, you know, way of taking out trees. I think we're sort of earnestly trying to protect our canopy, grow our canopy and let every, educate everybody why this is so important. Because I think people go to other cities in our, in our region and say, oh, why can't we look like, you know, the Tree Lane Streets in Palata? Why can't we look like, you know, some of the places in Danville? And this is why, because they are protecting their canopy. And I think we're just trying to continue to do that here. And so I am fully in support of the ordinance. And I appreciate all the work you've done. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Andrews.
Thank you. I want to thank staff for the presentation and the feedback and the questions being answered. And just want to remind us that it's called Tree Preservation Ordinance. So the purpose of it is trying to protect our trees, which is very important, especially when we are living in a time where we are seeing increasing, increasing examples of climate change. So I just want to remind us the whole purpose of all of this is to help protect our community. I will also.
Did a tree put a hole in my roof?
I understand that. I'm, I am going to continue my comment. And it is my time to speak. Okay, thank you. Also want to just acknowledge staff in doing a lot of community outreach regarding the, the Sky West Airport. I do think it's time for possibly another conversation and reminder of, of what is happening. Maybe there is some kind of community outreach or where the developer could come and explain what is happening and the status of the project. We are continuing to see a lot of advocacy at every single meeting. And it's now to the point where I think we all need to just create a space to have these conversations, have the hard conversations, talk about it, talk about the realistic timelines, and just, just address it now. I think it's time. So this is directed at you, Mr. Lirikko. It is directed at all of staff who can help communicate back to the community what is going on with Sky West. Please, please respond to them now. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bonilla.
Thank you. I generally agree with the comments that have been made by my colleagues. I, I support this ordinance, you know, with the whole idea of, you know, protecting our tree canopies. And I think we all recognize the importance of that. But I also kind of just want to echo the importance of, you know, us keeping Sky West or exploring Sky West as open space and, you know, just making sure that we're clear about that. Because, you know, when I was reading this ordinance, the only, the major area that I had the concern with was kind of that airport landscape and, you know, the kind of section seven. But I think what you said is, section seven is going to be section seven if it's here or if it's not here. It's the FAA requirements. And it's not like we're going to superimpose these requirements to go and mow down all these trees. But we're actually putting it here so that there's a consolidated set of reference points for what people need to do in this community to preserve our trees and to make sure that we're, you know, dealing with the climate issues in front of us in a meaningful and purposeful way. So I do, you know, support this as it's written. I do have, you know, a little, I share the concern about Southwest. But I don't think the intent of this is to go and, you know, pave that over and to, you know, make that not open space. And I do appreciate this being included here for the purposes of simplicity and consolidation of, call it, general tree issues and preservation within our community. The question that I did have is, you know, we heard from one of the speakers, sort of, you know, the chicken and the egg. Do we need a tree inventory before we do this? You know, can you just maybe sort of address that from your professional opinion?
Yeah, we, so we, we did our first tree canopy survey. Gosh, I guess it was late last year. And I think we presented that to the council at a work session. So you could really look at not only the tree canopy citywide. And this was data that was taken, this was LiDAR data that was taken from the county back in 2020. Ideally, we should be reviewing and updating that canopy survey every five years. So we can actually start to monitor the progress once the ordinance has been adopted. I think the other thing that's going to weigh into the equation is when we develop and when we, if we adopt this and move to the next, we have, it's become a priority. And if, when it becomes a priority for council and we develop an urban forestry management plan, which we are hoping to maybe get some funding for from the state, to maybe pay for, that could help develop a lot of policies that the council can help promote. So for example, if we really want to be intentional about targeting certain neighborhoods that are currently underserved, and let's say the canopy coverage currently is 13%, but we want to make it closer to 20%, then we can start making those educated decisions about how we're going to use those in lieu fees, whether we want to use it to plant in underserved areas. But I think that's going to go a real long way to help us kind of understand and monitor not only how many trees do we have, not only how many trees do we have, but are actually, are we growing in the canopy the way that we think we need to? Or do we need to revisit our approach altogether and be more bold? And that, of course, we won't know because we haven't been here before. This is kind of the first time, as Peter mentioned, that we've updated the ordinance in 23 years. So we're hoping, and based on our consultant who has done a lot of work, DUDAC has done a lot of work in other jurisdictions in the Bay Area, that they're bringing best practices to our ordinance and that this will result in success. But it is, again, it is, it is a, you know, part, the first step is to adopt the ordinance. One of the big things that we were looking at, which I think we don't currently have, is we don't have those protections for trees in the rear yard. So neighbors could just cut down those trees, we'd lose that canopy, other neighbors would complain that the tree's gone and the city would have no regulatory authority to mitigate the loss. Now we have that option if we adopt this ordinance, which will, again, it's not going to solve and establish it overnight, but you have to start somewhere and we have to start looking at where do we want to, how do we want to align ourselves to meet our climate and our sustainability goals.
Makes sense. So we do have a baseline in which we're measuring kind of our starting point and success of this ordinance over time. Excellent. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilmember Cyrop.
Just two small additional comments. Please do look into policy loss exemptions, even if they're not included in the higher, very high fire danger areas. And then using the canopy not just for monitoring progress, but also maybe other creative ways for us to use the canopy for enforcement. I'm not sure how expensive or how frequent we can do LiDAR scans for a tree canopy, but how can we use technology in a way that will help with enforcement more proactively? Yeah, thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Goldstein.
Thank you, Mayor. This project's been a long time working and it's, I like the result. Excellent, excellent work and great work also in the community outreach, getting people to come and talk about their concerns. And I appreciate your thoughtful consideration of their concerns and how clearly you're able to articulate what the intent and function of this tree preservation ordinance is. I would like to give a shout out to some people who aren't here today. Mamie Bauer and Manan Jamison have been really instrumental in the Fairway Park Neighborhood Association, really pushing for canopy ordinance, tree preservation ordinance. This has been something on their heart and mind for several years. I know at least a decade that we've been talking about canopy reforestation and so forth. And so I just really, really appreciate the great work that you've done, but again, a shout out to those folks and I will be supporting this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. I am not going to comment, I'm going to leave my comments with my council. I think I've been listening all night. I know, I know right now we're landing on the best side possible, so I will stop there. And I think I had moved by Councilmember Zermeño, seconded by Mayor Protem Roach. And if there are no further questions, Madam City Clerk, you can take the role, or we can start voting. Take the role and start voting. How's that? And I think it was going to pass unanimously at 7:00. Okay, thank you. And thank you staff for your work and thank you very much. And Director Bowser, thank you very much. Okay, moving on to next item is council reports and announcements. Are there any council reports and announcements? Councilmember Andrews.
Thank you. I want to first, I didn't hear earlier the location of the next Clean and Green event, but it's going to be at Weeks Park from 8:00 to 12:00. It is 27182 Patrick Avenue. We also are going to have a Bay Area Water Supply and Conservation Agency class on water-efficient edible gardens, also Saturday, 10:30 to 1:00 p.m. And wanted to give a, I guess, congratulations to Big Mike, he turned 50. He is the big plastic guy that sits off freeways. I did attend that celebration and visited the Pez Museum. And I don't know if you all know, there's over 3,000 Pez dispensers in this Pez museum that was mentioned earlier this week, so I thought that was pretty cool. Also want to give a special thank you to Southland Mall for bringing the Hello Kitty truck. That was a big deal. A lot of the community came out. Took two years to get it, but they came, she came. The community was very excited about it. Also tomorrow, Career Fair, IT Business Academy, City Hall, 11:00 to 2:00. Also want to thank all of staff who attended the Black August Teach-In for BAWPA, Black Women Organized for Political Action. It was an event on discussing redlining, so thank you to City Manager Adamant as well as City Attorney Lawson for attending that. And also want to thank the library for an awesome second annual K-pop event at the library. Over, I believe, 2,000 people showed up that day. So thank you so much for everyone and all the businesses that participated in the step card event. We will be announcing prizes very soon. And just also want to give an early, early update, just real quick. Voices of the Diaspora, they're having an event with Treasures Unleashed, or it is Treasures Unleashed, Voices of the Diaspora would be at Veterans Hall at 3:00 p.m. And want to give an early, early update or announcement because the library, they're celebrating the Golden Girls. It's going to be the 40th anniversary of Golden Girls and I'm a Golden Girls fan. So I just want to give a shout out to the library staff for being on point with that celebration. It's September 13, 3:00 to 4:30, games, crafts, photo ops, and episode screening. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? If not, I just wanted, oh, Councilor Goldstein.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to point out that we are doing the Concert in the Park on Sunday and your friendly neighborhood council members will be there flipping burgers and hot dogs and serving up food and hope you'll come out and enjoy the music. And we like to entertain you, but frankly, we're entertained by the people who show up too. So thank you for coming out. And then I think Julie, you probably want to talk about what's happening on Saturday, right? The HPD Neighborhood Event? No, you don't? Oh, okay. All right. Nevermind. Oh, okay, all right. Oh, yes, it's at Memorial Park and the time is from about 9:00 a.m. until 3:00 p.m.
I think the concert starts at 1:00 p.m.
Concert starts at 1:00? So we're there at 9:00 flipping?
Exactly. Getting things ready.
I got you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, you should not start cooking at the same time as the concert starts. I'm just saying. I just wanted to say that this week, last week and this week, schools started and Cal Stadium is in session, Chabot's in session, Hayward Unified's in session, and everyone's back in school. So I wanted to, today I was out driving around and I just wanted to say, you know, welcome back to school, everybody, but also can, can everyone just slow down? You know, slow down and just keep an eye out for the kids. They were, this morning I was driving to downtown and there were, you know, kids and students walking, walking, you know, walking to school and I just saw a lot of speeding going on. But anyways, I just wanted to welcome back everybody to school and after school, make sure you go to the library. I know there's a lot of fun things at the library and, but that's it. So welcome back. Next is council referrals. There is no council referrals. And now our next meeting is on Tuesday, August 26.
The mayor's birthday and my mom's birthday. Two of the most important people in my life.
So I guess I'll be at that meeting on the 26th, but I will see everyone on the 26th when, if there is no further business, meeting adjourned.